We are live.
Thank you. We're going to call the meeting order. We're going to begin with a pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence. So everyone would please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll with silence, please. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McKinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Our first meeting in the C D is the public comment on proposed ordinance. The ordinance that we're talking about is an intergovernmental agreement with Butler Township for the repair and dedication of the roads in accordance with Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law, Act 177 of 1996, previously adopted as Act 180 under 1992. We would ask anybody who's going to make public comment when you speak, please unmute your microphone or your phone, whatever you're using to call in. Otherwise, when you are not speaking, please, if you would mute it so that we wouldn't have any feedback. So the, it's now open for public comment. Anyone would like to speak up, please give us your name.
My name's Jason Carr from Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania.
Repeat your name, please, a little louder. Would you repeat your name, please, a little bit louder? Thank you.
Yeah. My name's Jason Carr from Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania.
Okay, Mr. Carr.
And I just have a general question. Is there anyone on county council who, or any relatives of county council that have relatives that live in these two townships that you're entering into these agreements with tonight?
I personally am not aware, but I can't speak for everybody. I don't, I don't know if there's anyone who would be residing in Butler Township first and Cunningham Borough would be the next hearing. Anybody in Butler Township? Hearing none, Mr. Carr.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public?
I didn't hear the comments in the beginning. I'm sorry, my phone wasn't connected. Could you just repeat the first comment?
Sure. Is that Mr. Mantow? I think I can recognize the voice. If you're not speaking.
Yes, sir.
If you were to mute your phone or your microphone, depending on what you're using, when you want to speak, please unmute it so we can hear you correctly. Mr. Mantow, do you have a comment about the first public hearing?
What was the, I couldn't hear the topic, boy.
Topic, the intergovernmental agreement with Butler Township to transfer that road over to Butler Township from the county.
Okay. Yeah, well, the, the road was repaired by the county, correct?
You are correct, Mr. Mantow.
Okay. So if the road was repaired by the county and the township doesn't want it, what reports do they have?
Well, the township has already approved that they will accept it.
Oh, okay. All right. Tonight, I'll, I'll, I'll switch on the title.
Okay.
I thought it was something like, no. I'll mute my phone.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? If no, if no other comment, please, do we have a motion for adjournment of public hearing?
Walter, move.
Walter, do we have a second?
Sheila.
Sheila, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. The second public hearing is scheduled for 6:10. So we will wait four minutes before we move to that hearing. Okay. We'll move down to number two. We'll move down to number three. We'll move down to number four. We'll move down to number five. We'll move down to number six. We'll move down to number seven. We'll move down to number eight. We'll move down to number nine. We'll move down to number 10. We'll move down to number 11. We'll move down to number 12. We'll move down to number 13. We'll move down to number 14. We'll move down to number 15. We'll move down to number 16. We'll move down to number 17. We'll move down to number 18. We'll move down to number 19. We'll move down to number 20. We'll move down to number 21. We'll move down to number 22. We'll move down to number 23. We'll move down to number 24. We'll move down to number 25. We'll move down to number 26. We'll move down to number 27. Okay, it's now 6:10. We'll call immediate order. We've already done the pledge allegiance and the moment of silence in the previous hearing. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McKinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. The meet, the public hearing is regards to the proposed ordinance. It's an intergovernmental agreement with Cunningham Borough for the repair and dedication of roads in accordance with the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law, Act 177 of 1996, previously adopted as Act 180 of 1972. Now open for public comment on this ordinance with Cunningham Borough. Any member of the public who would like to speak to the ordinance? Anyone from council? Do we have a motion? Excuse me, go ahead.
Mr. McKinley, this is Realde Crocomol, just as a matter of full disclosure. My brother-in-law, Anthony Reba, is a member of the Cunningham Borough Council as of January of this year. I just want to note for the record that Attorney Shannon Craig Lipsansky did all the work on this matter and that the negotiations and discussions happened really in 2019 before my brother-in-law was elected to the Borough Council.
Thank you. We have a motion for adjournment. What was that, Chris? Motion for adjournment?
I'll make it, yes. Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Thank you. We're moving right to the voting session, please. We've completed the two public hearings. We've completed the pledge of the flag and a moment of silence. Roll call me, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Houck?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Mr. McKinley?
Present.
All present.
Thank you. Moving down to the next items, there's no recognitions or proclamations, additions or deletions to the voting session agenda. A motion adopt the voting session agenda.
So moved, Vog.
Mr. Vog, who's second?
Sheila.
Sheila, all in favor of adopting the agenda as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Before we get to agenda items, we have two motions there that we've been having for every meeting since we've gone to the virtual meetings. So we want a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement for majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Do we have a motion?
Present. Presented. Schnee.
Okay, Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, McDermott.
Leanne?
Yes.
Very good. On the question, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Also, a second motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the manager's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
Motion, McDermott.
Okay. Do we have a second for Ms. McDermott? I need a second.
Walter, second.
Walter, very good. On the question, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Now we're down to public comment on any agenda item. The public, it's now open to comments, please.
Mr. McKinley, do we accept the minutes yet?
No. No.
I don't see that on the agenda.
It's down on the bottom page, the first page, motion to approve the minutes of April 25, 28. Right at the last line on the first page, Walter. Do you see it?
On the voting agenda?
Under public, under public comment.
Under, yeah, below the public comment. Last line on, on the very first page.
Oh, I don't see it there.
At the very bottom.
Under agenda items, clerk of counsel.
Yeah.
One, motion to approve minutes of the April 28, 20, 20 voting session.
Okay, I see it now. Thank you very much. I checked that.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, got it. Thank you very much.
No problem. So we still have public comment, though, please. Any public comment regarding agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we move down to the first agenda item, which is the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved, Sheila.
Okay, do we have a second for Ms. Seaman?
Second, Kendra.
Okay, Kendra. On the question?
Mr. McKinley, the only, and I know we're at difficult times on the minutes, if Sharon could put just a little bit more detail in for the public comment part, it would be a little bit more helpful than just a one-word answer. And I know, you know, there's not a whole lot you could put in other than that, but if we could add some more verbiage to that public comment section for the general public, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, we'll make every effort to do that. You know, we have been adding the emails and things that we've received, the conversations that we've received verbatim, as a separate page that's located on the meeting information. Okay? So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Uh, no.
Mr. Urban?
Yep.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving over to the second page, county manager items, motion to adopt the ordinance entered into an intergovernmental agreement with Butler Township for the repair and dedication of roads in accordance with the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Law, Act 177 of 1996, previously adopted as Act 180 of 1972. So do we have a motion?
Mr. McKinley, we need old business first, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Um, I have a couple items under old business, if I could.
Go ahead, Walter.
Okay. Uh, the crisis team reports, I know you sent out last, I think the last time we met.
I'll get those up tomorrow, Walter.
Okay.
But I do have, and I appreciate everybody's input there. Thank you.
Okay, okay. And the other item I have is the property tax ordinance that we passed at the last meeting, I believe it was. I just, I just think maybe we need to clarify some things and at this point, I think is probably appropriate under old business, is I know there's some confusion from the tax col, municipalities regarding what our ordinance does. And, and I just want to let everyone know that's maybe watching or needs clarification. And what we did was we extended, we did not extend the face period. What we did was we eliminated the penalty for Ju, from June to the August date. That's what we did. We eliminated.
August 18.
August, yes, August 18. I have it on my sheet here. So what we actually did was we, we reduced the penalty from 10% to zero from June 18th to August 18th. We did nothing to, and I know semantics, but just to be clear, because the tax, I know that one of the emails we have received from a municipality says they think it's going to be difficult for them to collect the tax. But the other point that I want to make is that we need to make sure that the manager gets that ordinance out to all the tax collectors before the 30-day period or it won't be effective. And that 38-day period will end very shortly, so we need to get that ordinance sent out to all the tax collectors according to the statute or that, that whole ordinance that we passed will be voided. So that's, that's.
Remember that thought. When we get to the work session, I think there's some information there that'll help us understand.
Okay.
What's been done there, okay? But remember that thought, okay?
I sure will.
Okay.
That's all I have under old business.
Good, Mr. Walter? Are you good, Walter?
Uh, yes, I'm good. Thank you very much.
No problem. Going back to the item under county manager, the ordinance that we just had the public hearing about in regards to Butler Township and the road there, do we have a motion for that?
Presented. Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Kendra.
Kendra? On the question? As everybody's probably aware, this has been ongoing for, since the, towards the end of 2019, so this is finally going to move that road over to the local municipality, in this case, Butler Township. So that will be removed from the care and responsibility of the county. Okay? Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Haas? Mr. Haas, my microphone muted.
Can you hear me?
Now or then?
Yes, I'm an affirmative, yes, please.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you. Moving down to number two, same type of ordinance, but again, it's an intergovernmental agreement, this time with Cunningham Borough, to move the ownership of that road over to the Borough instead of the county. Do we have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Presented. Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? Same situation, been ongoing since 2019. We're getting closer. We still have one more municipality that we're going to be working with, but I'll have two hours done after tonight, hopefully. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas? Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes. Thank you. Going down to items under county council, first is a line to, motion to adopt the change loser in counting bylaws, Rule 1D. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Houck? Do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Very good. On the question, Ms. Houck, do you want to open that up?
Well, no, we've been discussing these since February. And so, you know, we did talk about them with the code review committee. We talked about them on our last work session, and I think that we're ready to move forward.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of comments, Mr. McKinley, if I can.
Go ahead.
Um, well, on 1D, I know there were some, some amendments that we made as a committee, and there were some things that were sent to us as a memo from the Office of Law regarding removing, like Section 2 should be deleted in its entirety. And there's some things that we did not discuss under the code committee meeting on May 4th, and I find it a little bit disconcerting that now we have to look through the verbiage that the solicitor sent us yesterday to find out if we agree to that verbiage. One of the things that I don't agree with is the words, some of the words in there that says the, says we propose removing the last sentence from Section 3 that begins with the word however, there should be no requirement that a quorum must be physically present. I guess the Office of Law is saying that we could hold a, a meeting after this emergency's over without anybody in the room, and the public could all attend and, and look at empty chairs. That was why that verbiage was put in there, I believe. We want to make sure that the majority of people that attend council meetings are physically present, as opposed to everybody calling in and have a public meeting with just the public sitting in the chairs. So I'm a little bit concerned about taking out that verbiage about physically present in our bylaws.
Um, Mr. Mr. Griffith?
Sure.
I don't, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but my motion was to, for the amendment as it's presented in the packet. And I believe Ms. McDermott seconded as it's presented in the packet. And I'm aware that we did receive something from the Office of Law, a memo on it, but I didn't include that in my, in my motion, because the Office of Law sent that to us yesterday. I don't believe it fundamentally changes what I had submitted and what we had discussed as a code review committee, but they had three months and finally sent us an opinion on it yesterday. And I don't believe that it changes what, you know, the meaning of what I had proposed, which was essentially to remove the barrier that there would be for a council member to participate by telephone or any electronic media without a vote of council to allow that. So my motion stands as it is.
Okay. Well, if we're not incorporating any of the memos that were sent to us through the Office of Law yesterday, then that's fine. I'm, I will, I will wait for the next code review committee. We could discuss those then.
Yeah. The, what's presented is in the packet, unless there's an amendment to it, is what we're going to be voting on, okay? As Ms. Houck indicated.
That's fine.
So we'll go forward with that, unless someone has an amendment they would like that. All right? Do we have a, a motion in a second? Do we have any more questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes. I, I agree that, you know, we should just move on. Go to number four, which is a motion to change the bylaw, Rule 8F, as the bylaw in the packet that's being presented here this evening. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved. Linda.
Do we have a second for Ms. Houck?
Second, Walter.
Very good. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me, go ahead.
Uh, this is Chris speaking.
Yeah.
I, I'm going to, the reason why I vote no is because I kind of agree with the Office of Law. So anything against Linda and Walter, Walter, and not, nothing at all. I just, I received this yesterday, too, and I, I kind of like the direction in which they were going. That's why I'm voting no on it.
Yeah, and I, and I think, actually, if we were to remove that first one, that's fine, but, you know, we're, we're voting on what's presented in the packet. Okay?
If I could, Mr. McKinley, it's Linda.
Yes.
I would just say that the purpose of the amendment was to make sure that we vote for one seat at a time.
Fine.
And the nomination process, I believe, as it stands in the bylaws, is fine, but what we have been doing is if we have multiple seats open, we were voting on them all at once and causing a lot of confusion. And what the purpose of the amendment was, was to ensure that we would vote on the seats one at a time and reduce the confusion.
Mr. Chair? Yes, go ahead. Yes, again, Linda, I, I can see where you're coming from, but no matter what we put in here, I mean, it's, it's could be very, very confusing, and they're all different kind of scenarios. I'm kind of going along with the fact that, yes, we had, we went through the last meeting that we had with the ABCs, and it was difficult times, but we got through it. And it, it was troublesome, but we did it, and, and no one had. Uh, but we got through it, and it was troublesome, but we did it, and no one had any problems with it, although it did take a long time.
I don't think that's true, that no one had any problems with it, there was an awful lot of confusion. But I respect your opinion, Mr. Perry.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, you know, we went through it that night, it was a long night, it was a late night. Uh, there was a little bit of, uh, back and forth. And obviously, we had several seats involved in one particular, uh, ABC. So it was an unusual circumstance. And so that, you know, fit into the situation. I believe no matter what procedure we have in place, there's a potential for some issue. So, you know, whatever procedure we have in place, we'll try to work with it, and hopefully we'll clean it up and have a better card. If any other comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Okay, moving down to number five. Motion to adopt the change loser counting council bylaws, rule 5B. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Griffith? Do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second.
Second, Sne.
Okay. Mr. Sne? On the question? Roll call, please.
Perry?
No.
Ms. Radell?
No.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
No.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Six yes, five no.
Motion passes. Moving down to number six. Motion to adopt the change loser county bylaws, rule 5D. Do we have a motion? Who's that? Matt? Do we have a second for Matt Vog?
Sheila.
Sheila, very good. On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Excuse me, moving down to number seven, motion to adopt the change loser county bylaws, section 8D. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Linda.
Ms. Howe, do we have a second for Ms. Howe?
Walter, second.
Mr. Griffith? On the question? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Sne?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, thank you.
We're now a public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the public who would like to address council at this time?
Mr. McGinley?
Speak up and give me your name, please.
Mr. McGinley, this is Mark Raybo of Hazelton, speaking.
Very good, go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Yes, uh, first of all, I was curious as to, I don't know if this was discussed yet, or if it will be discussed on the work session, as far as, uh, you know, as far as the continuing pandemic, uh, you know, crisis management, uh, goes. But I would like to ask, as far as, uh, what the, um, Luzerne County's position is, uh, from the county manager pertaining to, as the other counties, uh, some of the other counties have done, that are not going into the, uh, from the red to the yellow phase, um, as far as what the, uh, county's, um, you know, uh, means of, uh, going into, uh, the yellow phase are. Are they going to follow in concert with the governor's, uh, you know, uh, plan or order? Or are they going to do like Schuylkill County and some of the other southeastern, uh, counties and western counties are proposing, which is to, uh, come up with their own plan, uh, in order to, um, go into their own, uh, to see safely if they can go into the yellow phase themselves. So I just wanted to know the answer to that question. And as well as, uh, also pertaining to the southern end of Luzerne County and Hazelton, which is a coronavirus hotspot. Um, what is, what the manager intends to do about the thousands of out-of-state residents who are shacking up with relatives inside of Hazelton City? And especially when it pertains to the elections coming up. Because as you well know, Mr. Chair and members of council, uh, these residents that are out of state, I don't know if you're aware of this, but they also have, uh, multiple, they claim multiple residencies. So, uh, it is very hard to ascertain if they are legitimate, uh, county residents, or if they are residents of New York State or New Jersey State. So I would like for the county manager to, uh, determine whether or not how to proceed forward, uh, with that, and you as a governing body in terms of, uh, the policy. Now, I'm, I'm well aware, and the, um, solicitors don't have to admonish me as to, or you as to, uh, that we cannot tell out-of-state residents to, uh, get out of here. I mean, we could ask them, but, uh, they, you know, have the right to free travel. So that being said, I think that, um, because it impacts the health and safety of our county and our residents negatively as far as the, uh, coronavirus goes, um, and it's very, very hard to social distance, um, I think that there needs to be a, uh, plan in place to see how this, uh, moves forward. And, um, I hope that, uh, the county manager and you as members of council can, uh, and along with municipalities, and especially in the southern end, uh, can determine how best to move forward. Uh, thank you.
I think what you're going to find, Mr. Raybo, um, at least my intent is, with the council, is to have a discussion in the work session in regards to your, uh, issues that you've brought up, so. Stay with us, and I think you'll hear some information in the work session. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other member of the public who would like to address council?
Brian Shiner Kingston.
Okay, Mr. Shiner, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mr. McGinley, I, the audio on this call tonight, I've tried two different phone lines, and the audio is horrible. It's very difficult to hear and, and be able to comprehend what's going on. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Griffith, in the beginning, had requested under old business that the report from the crisis team be, be given, and I couldn't, I couldn't, I hear your response at all.
Well, if you can hear me now, do you hear me now, Mr. Shiner?
I can, I can hear you now, yes.
Okay. My response to Mr. Griffith was, I will have that up hopefully tomorrow. And I appreciate the information that was forwarded to me by the members of the council who served on those committees.
And you say you'll have that up tomorrow, what does that mean, up on the website?
Yeah, we'll put it up under county council.
Oh, oh, okay. I thought it was going to be something that was going to, I thought it was something that would be brought up when I requested it the other week. I thought it was something that would just be discussed at a meeting of council, that's all.
Well, we're going to put it up on the website, what, what we have. And certainly, that's, uh, that can be brought up for discussion in the future. Those committees are still meeting, so I'm sure there'll be additional information that'll be coming forward also.
Now, that's great. And, and my other thing is, are, why are we still making people call into a Scranton toll number to participate in Luzerne County Government?
Well, I've asked that question, uh, that was the only closest local number that was, uh, available to us. Uh, and I use the word available, and maybe that's not the proper word. Uh, we are researching what other options we may have. Uh, there may be some costs involved with some of the options, so we'll, we'll have to make sure that we have all our things lined up before we make that decision. But yes, it's been noted, and it's been forwarded, and we're looking into some kind of solution to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Any other member of the public?
Richard Mantz?
Okay, Mr. Mantz?
Okay, um, I'm in a little bit of a dilemma because of the fact that, uh, I mailed in my voters to change my voter's registration. And they say you have to have it back for 30 days before you're, uh, able to vote. And I don't think I'm going to have it back in the time, the timeframe. So what do I have to do?
I don't have the answer to that question, Mr. Mantz, if someone in the solicitor's office or someone who has that information.
Mr. McGinley, this, Mr. McGinley, this is Mike Butera. First of all, what kind of, what kind of change are you making to your registration?
I'm changing, I'm changing. Changing party.
Change, okay. Yeah, the, uh, you, you, you send it in already, so it's timely. It'll be made, there, there's no requirement that you have to have it for 30 days. Uh, you'll, you'll, you'll be, the party that you're changing to will be the party that you will vote for in this coming primary. If you, if you call voter.
Thank you very much for that. Wait, no, wait, I'm not done, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, go ahead, we'll have a minute or so.
Okay. Now, also, I would like to vote at a voting place. And the county sent me a registry, a, a ballot. So does that knock me out of voting at a voting place instead of a mail-in ballot?
I think that was discussed at our last meeting, Mr. Mantz. And correct me if I'm wrong, there's people on here who may know better than I do. If you don't return that ballot, you can go to a voting, uh, polling place and do your voting there. If you do submit your ballot, you would be not eligible to go to the polling place to do your voting. So it's your choice how you want to handle it.
And now, where, where are the new voting, all right, I, I'm in the back now. So where is the new voting polls going to be?
I don't want, I don't have any information I want to make. It is on the webpage. And all the information is listed there. Yes, so if you're.
I'm looking at county webpage right now, and there's nothing on here for voting.
Uh, it is there, I don't know where you're looking at, but it is there. If you cannot find it by tomorrow, you have my phone number, call me, and I'll go through it with you.
Okay. And then, uh, the, the book, the, uh, the list of, of voting polls, so how many polls do we have?
I think 58 is the number.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
No problem. Anyone else in the public?
Mr. McGinley?
Okay, Mr. Nat, first? Go ahead, Mr. Nat, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Uh, my question is in respect to, uh, the Division of Judicial Service and Records in regards to the coroner. Um, on page seven of 70, it suggests that 14 pending overdoses, deaths, uh, 32 per year date. I was wondering if there's, um, a statistic from this year's as opposed to last suicide, uh, overdoses? Uh, in regards to COVID-19, if that number has racked it up? It would show an indication of how, uh, people are handling this lockdown, um, that they're subjected to? I think that's a fair question. Um, I wanted to bring to Manager Petry's attention in one of the press releases uh, about elderly people in the nursing homes. And it said 11 people had died succumb. But they had underlying health conditions. Now, of the 11, there was only one that was under the average normal lifespan of a human being. The average lifespan of all of them put together tallied in about 85 years old. The average lifespan of a human being is approximately 72 years old. Now, I know this for a fact because I had a case that I had undergone in regards to how workman's comp insurance and Medicare work out a settlement for people who have conditions that will be with them for the rest of their life. And Medicare, along with the insurance companies, come to the conclusion that approximately 72 to 73, a person's life is expected to end, and then that relieves the responsibility of the insurance company of any, any further, um, need to tend to that patient or person's needs. So the point I'm trying to make here is that if they're registering these people, and please mind, please understand, I feel very bad my condolences go out to anybody who loses their life and for their families. I'm not heartless. But when insurance companies in the Medicare system comes to the conclusion that the life expectancy of a person is 72, and then you have the average lifespan of these people who have passed away in the elderly homes at approximately 85, they were living on borrowed time. It might sound harsh and callous to say that, but, I mean, and it, and it just comes down to the need to reopen up sooner than later. Because people pass from this world. They, they go on to eternity, whichever direction they chose. Okay, so, um, that is my perception of, and you know, there's, there's another example of people die every day. And this is an unfortunate, uh, occurrence that happens. Children going to the bus stop, boarding and off, unloading and unloading onto their buses. Where you have people that are ignorant, they're in a rush, and you hear it off too often, where they get hit by people who don't know enough to stop for them. Okay? With everybody locked in their homes, children on the crew.
I think.
That eliminates those then.
Yep, I think, uh, you made your point with that, with the, uh, older residents of some of the nursing facilities. Uh, as far as the coroner's question, I believe there will be, uh, information there. I know I don't have it tonight, I'll ask the county manager to get that information, and, uh, we'll make that available. Okay?
And that, that'd be greatly appreciated. I think that that, that has to be all weighed out as to what the county should do about moving forward with getting back to work, that getting back to regular life, accepting a safe and, and managed. back to regular life, accepting a safe and managed, you know, under the stipulations of health and EPE and...
We're gonna discuss that in the next meeting, so.
Tim, this is Dave Petry. I have that information on the coroner's office for the drug and alcohol suicides, if you want it now.
Very good. Provide that if you would, please.
2019, January through April, 40 drug overdoses, zero to alcohol, and 14 suicides. 2020, January through April, 47 drug overdoses, one alcohol, 12 suicides.
Okay.
The, it's racked it up, is what you're...
A little bit, yep. Any other member of the public?
Yes, hi, it's Jason Carr, Salersburg, Pennsylvania. A question regarding the 2020... Thank you. A question regarding the 2020 census. As we know, Luzerne County is a sanctuary county for illegal aliens in the state of Pennsylvania. Just two questions. Are illegal aliens, people who are not, who do not live here illegally inside the United States, are they required to identify themselves through the census? And if they are or not, what is the position of the county manager as to the, an illegal alien completing the 2020 census?
Mr. Petry, did you hear that information?
I'm sorry, I muted, I muted myself, and I muted myself again. Yeah, I got the question. I'm, I'm not aware of, obviously, we don't, we're not running the census. So whatever the federal and government, the federal government's position is, I would, I would defer to what the federal government position is regarding who has failed the census. I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any sort of thing.
So we'll follow the federal guidelines, whatever they may be. Right?
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? There are two comments on the question and answer. Dan "Why" is the gentleman who asked both questions. Why can the county not open outside of Hazelton with 67% of deaths in nursing homes and small businesses capable of adapting CDC guidelines the best? Why they are not open? And we'll be talking about that in the work session. He has a second comment. Regional firearms stores have been open following CDC guidelines and have sold out of their stock. There are people that have gone eight weeks without a paycheck. Businesses are not getting their SBA funding, and I think we all know that there's been a holdup there or delays in many cases. Unfortunately, the county is not distributing that money. It's coming through the federal portals. And there's one other comment below under anonymous. The state has failed its citizens and has done, done nothing to fix the problem. Anyone else?
Mr. McKinley, Steve Urban.
Go ahead, Mr. Urban.
So I wanna answer Mr. Carr's question. I'm actually on the census.gov website, and there's a question that says two is included in the resident population counts. Says the resident population counts include all people, citizens and non-citizens who are living in the United States at the time of the census. People are counted at their usual residence, which is the place where they live and sleep most of the time.
Okay. And that's directly from the federal guidelines?
That is directly from the census.gov website.
Thank you.
Section.
Mr. McKinley, it's Walter.
Yes, go ahead.
On Rich Manta's question about voting, and I know Mr. Butera's in the room, so I think his question was, if he gets a ballot and he decides he's gonna go vote, can he vote at the polls? The answer to that is yes, by provisional only. Is that correct, Mr. Butera?
That, that's correct. He votes by provisional, and then, and then we check and make sure that, that he or nobody else sent in that ballot that was sent to him. We have to make sure that there's no fraud here, that we have to make sure that people are not voting twice. If someone received a ballot and they didn't send it in, and they appear at the polls, the poll workers will know that they were sent a ballot. They will vote, vote provisional, and, and we will make sure that, that only one ballot, that only that ballot at the polls is counted. And, and if that mail-in ballot does come in, it will not be counted.
Very good. All right.
Mr. McKinley?
Speak up.
This is Ramel, and I just wanna take a moment. I'm honored to have the opportunity to acknowledge and applaud Assistant County Solicitor Dave Schwager for being sworn in as the president of the Pennsylvania Bar Association last week. It is quite the honor for him as well as Luzerne County. He is taking over leadership of the 26,000-member group. It's important to me, as I'm certain it's important to all of you and for all of us, especially those of us who are attorneys, to make a difference in our community. We are part of a learned profession, and thus we are held to a higher standard. No matter if you are a member of the bench or the bar, we all have taken an oath to uphold justice and to advocate for our clients. And with that comes the most important task. We have a responsibility to speak the truth, to fight for the rights of not only our clients, but for all people who seek help. Dave Schwager embodies the spirit. He's a lawyer that stands out not just because he is a great lawyer, but because he uses his skills in a positive way for the betterment of others. We are lucky to have him represent Luzerne County. He does the right thing when it may not have, be a popular or easy thing to do. He is a man of great wisdom, wit, and integrity. I am proud to call him colleague, and I am even more honored to call him my friend. And I hope all of us together congratulate him on this honor.
Thank you. And it is a very great honor, and we certainly are very happy that we would have Mr. Schwager as attorney in our, in our county and serves within, in our county to be honored in that fashion. Anyone else?
May I, Mr. Chairman, it's David Schwager. If I might just have a moment, I wanted to thank you. Thank, thank you very much for your kind comments, and particularly thank my, my, my boss, Ramel DeCrockamo, for those lovely comments. She, she had me on here under false pretenses, but she spoke beautifully, and we're, we're very fortunate to have her here in Luzerne County. And I know she's destined for even, even greater things. But I thank the council and the county manager for all of the confidence and the work that I've done in the last 19 or so years here as an assistant county's listener, and I look forward to continuing to work with all of you. And I thank you all very much for those couple of minutes of my time. That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Chris.
Okay, Chris. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. We'll move right to the work session. Please. Looking at the work session, we've already done the call, call order and pledge allegiance in the moment of silence. We need a roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Ms. Haas?
Here.
Here.
Mrs. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Your votes?
Here.
Mr. McKinley?
Present.
All present.
Very good, thank you. Looking down at the agenda items, I would ask that we would add number six, with permission of all the council, an item for discussion on reopening of the county. Ms. McDermott and Mr. Petry would be the two people who will speak directly to that, and then, of course, we'll have discussion after that. But we would, without, if there's no questions or issues, we would add that as number six. Any problem with that from any member of council?
So moved, Mr. Chair. Okay, motion.
Okay, you want to adopt the agenda with that addition, Mr. Haas?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you made the motion.
Walter will second.
Mr. Griffith makes a second. All in favor of the agenda with that addition, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any in opposition? Any abstention? None heard. Motion carries. We're gonna do the divisional reports at the end, because I think there's a lot of discussions that were gonna take place here at some of the other items. We can wait for that till the end. That's already there, 24 pages and pretty much in detail. So we'll begin with the primary election update, and I'd ask Manager Dave Petry to begin that discussion.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So here's where we're at with the, the primary election for June 2nd. Obviously, the, the governor has set forth, the Department of State has set forth June 2nd as the, as the date for the, the primary election. We are moving forward with this pretty quickly here in Luzerne County. So far, the, the story of the election has obviously been the coronavirus and the mail-in ballot applications. As everybody's aware, we have mailed a application for a mail-in ballot to every Republican and Democrat who are registered in Luzerne County. Whether or not they wanted to take advantage of that or not is up to them. The application is a generic one. It's the same one that can be found online. But we thought it was a good opportunity for us to draw attention to the ability for individuals to, to, to have a mail-in ballot option. I have said this in the past, and I've said this numerous times, that I believe the mail-in ballot option is the safest option, especially in light of the coronavirus, to vote from the safety and security of your own home. People, we will be having polling places available, available. Those polling places are found on the Luzerne County website under 2020 primary information or polling place locator as well on the Luzerne County website for the June 2020 election. Please note that those consolidated places are only for the June 2020 election. They're not for any other election after this. Those 58 places will be up and running for the election on June 2nd. Now, the mailer has, had, so about last week, we had about 13, 23,000 mail-in applications at the Voters Bureau. The mailer went out. Good news and bad news is that it has been an absolutely huge success. We've received about 10,000 applications just in the past two days of the mail-in ballot, and we are continually processing them. So far, the incredibly dedicated workers we have in the Election Bureau who are helping out have processed over 25,000 applications. We have staff working 10 to 12-hour days. Over 20 employees are working over there at this time. I'm having a staffing call tomorrow to probably assign additional staff over, over to elections in order to sit down and go over this, this virus. All of their hours are being tracked, because we believe that these additional hours are, they should be able to be reimbursed by the CARES Act funding that the, the federal and state government has put out. So this is an opportunity for us to, to get the information out there. Number two, the consolidation plan, the electronic poll books and the paper ballots were approved by the Election Board last week. Trainings have been scheduled for our poll workers. We are still in need of poll workers. We've contacted every judge at this time to maintain that we have the, the correct number of poll workers, and we're waiting to hear back from some judges. A lot of poll workers have, have told us they're not interested. We're still working on that. And we're gonna just continue to, to move forward with regard to this election. The incredible staff that we have over there, I was over there today, and they are just working step by step by step. It's, it's a long process. The Department of State has put this application process into play, and it is a time-intensive process. It has to be touched by a lot of people in order to review the application, to make sure the proper sticker gets on the proper envelope. And the dedication of the people who are working over there is really truly impressive. And if county council would like to, to go over there and see them at work, I would encourage you to do it. Obviously, wear a mask at hand place if you would like to go. I'll tell security to maintain, to make sure that you're available to, to get in there if you would like to do it. I know there were a lot of questions that Councilman Haas asked, so I'm gonna defer now to the solicitor's office, who was able to track down those questions. So to the solicitor with any, Mr. Haas's comments.
Okay, thank you, Manager Petry. We're going to double team you, Attorney Butera and I. So I will take some of the questions, and he'll take other ones. The first question that was posed was where and how are the mail-in ballots stored, who has access to the storage, and what security measures are in place to prevent fraud? The ballot, the ballots are stored in a locked room, and we are following strict guidelines, and we are not going to reveal exactly where they are stored for security purposes. The second question was, can you televise the counting on Election Day, candidates or candidates represented? I'm gonna turn this over to, that question to Attorney Butera.
Yeah, I, I do not believe that you can televise the precanvassing, which is the canvassing that is being done during the day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The, there, there are no recording devices, recording devices allowed into the room where the precanvassing is being done. The only people in there will be the, the bipartisan committee that is doing the counting, as well as a candidate or the candidate's representatives, if they, if they want to watch. They're, they, they have to not, not bring in any cell phones or recording devices, and everyone is under an obligation not to disclose any of the results of any of this precanvassing until the polls close at 8:00 p.m. I believe that allowing cameras in the, in the room certainly would open the, open the, open the possibility of, of results being, being released prior to 8:00 p.m. The, the fact that, that a camera can zoom in and possibly see the results of a ballot or whatever, we don't want the results of not even one ballot released until after 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. The short answer is that no, television cameras will not be allowed.
And, and just for clarifications, we're not, we can't prohibit individuals from bringing cell phones, but we will give a very clear and concise notice and ask that they be turned off. And if, for whatever reason, there is a breach, we will report that breach to the district attorney's office. And Attorney Butera asked, answered who will be counting the votes. It's a bipartisan team that does the counting, and if necessary, because of the volume, we will have additional election staff help with the counting, counting of the votes. Next question is, where, will there be a list of mail-in ballots displayed at the polling place, just like absentee ballots? That's a yes. Will there be time-saving machines on hand to open the mail-in ballots, or will they be opened by hand? We are going to open the ballots by hand to ensure the integrity of the voting. There are times, we've noted that in, or we've come to, it's come to our attention, that if a machine opens the mail, it may damage the ballot, and then when the ballot is recorded, there may be a malfunction. So we are going to open the ballots by hand. The next question has to do with concerns about mailing every single registered voter in the county ballot application. People are mainly worried about fraud, but also the unnecessary cost, since many people have already applied. The applications were sent out... The applications were sent out to each household for their convenience and to make sure that all qualified voters had an opportunity to vote in this election and had the information and the resources available to them to apply by mail during the pandemic. It's, the cost of the mailing will be paid through the CARES Act. The next set of questions deal with, the Whitehaven Borough Place is now coupled with Dennison Township and is going to be extremely small, tight and difficult to maintain safe distance. Is it possible that another local building like the Whitehaven Library could be used that would offer more space? The Election Bureau called existing places to see if they were available for use. Whitehaven Borough said no. Whitehaven Borough votes with Dennison Township and Dennison Township said yes. We made the decision.
If I could jump in here real quick as well, Ramilda, since, since that time where, originally we contacted the Whitehaven people at the Whitehaven Library, they said, they said no, which is the reason why they decided to vote at Dennison Township. Since that time, I've been contacted by Linda Zoak, who's a councilwoman in Whitehaven Township regarding this, you know, and she said that the, going forward, the Whitehaven Library is, would love to have these people on and that's a municipal building and the person we talked to shouldn't have said that and those types of things. And I, I, I talked to the Election Bureau today and I have to call Ms. Zoak, I haven't gotten to her yet today. But, you know, I was hoping to move that back into the, to the library, but because the Election Board has already passed the proclamation and we've already posted everything, we're not going to be able to do that for this election. But I will tell Whitehaven that in no way, shape or form will we be seeking to move out of the Whitehaven Library ever again. And it only happened in this case because we called and they said no, so we had to make a decision and then now they're now saying yes. But I, I, I think it's, the timeline unfortunately has passed, so I have to call Ms. Zoak and let her know that. I just want to have that full disclosure for everybody on the record. And I, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. The second question deals with a Dallas resident got a Hazleton mail-in ballot. What is the process to rectify this? And it's been reported that it's happened to others. I just want to note for the record that the Election Bureau is processing well over 30,000 applications and sending out ballots. And there will be a certain level of human error, but the, for, be assured that the Election Bureau is being very careful when dealing with the magnitude of all these requests. I'm going to give a number that voters who receive the wrong ballot should contact the Bureau immediately. The number is 570-825-1715. I'm going to repeat that. And the Bureau will rectify any errors. The next question is, what is the process to cross-reference mailed-in ballots with voters who have passed away in between submission and Election Day? I'm going to refer you to Act 77, Section 1308D, which speaks to this. It says, "Whenever it shall appear by due proof that any absentee elector or mail-in elector who has returned his ballot in accordance with the provisions of this act has died prior to the opening of the polls on the day of the primary or election, the ballot of such deceased elector shall be rejected by the canvassers, but the counting of the ballot of an absentee elector or mail-in elector thus deceased shall not of itself invalidate any nomination or election." Attorney Butera, do you have anything else to add to that?
Yeah, as far as cross-referencing, there is no cross-referencing, there never has been, even with, even with that. And the law was the same with the absentee ballots before the mail-in ballots were, were approved. Whenever, whenever someone dies from the time, after they send their ballot in and before Election Day, their ballot can be voided, somebody has to bring it to, to our attention. If nobody brings it to our attention, we don't know about it, the vote, the vote will be counted. And, and as, as Attorney Crocamo said, the, it will not affect the, it will not affect the validity of the election.
The next question is.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
Ms. Crocamo.
Sure, absolutely.
Essentially, yeah, and, and again, just, just for the record, these questions came from four separate citizens out there too. I did have a couple in here, but this one was not one of mine, but it was a good question. And I think when, when you have your absentee ballots in a normal situation, in a normal time, you know, there aren't terribly many of them, but now we're looking at, at mail-in ballots and being a significant percentage of these votes. So it's just going to, we're going to rely on the general public there just to be vigilant and if somebody's passed away, to come in and report that to the Bureau of Elections, if I hear what Attorney Butera just said there.
Yes, that's, that's basically it. I mean, if we, if we, if we become aware of it one way or another, we will, we will void the ballot, but, but there is no, there is no specific cross-check, cross-checking system, cross-referencing system.
Because I think we're going to see from the normal, maybe a couple dozen ballots per polling place to, in some cases, hundreds and hundreds of them. So, I got some food for thought for the general public out there to be vigilant about something like that. All right, thank you guys.
Councilman Haas, now that we're discussing it, Attorney Butera and I will further discuss if there is some mechanism that we can use to ensure that, that we cast a wide enough net to try to decipher whether a ballot is sent in by someone who's deceased and we'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, that would be good. I, I think these, a lot of these questions I think should have been asked even when the General Assembly approved this law way back in the fall. And I think now it's, it's just become more immediate and more apparent. But I, I personally appreciate that. I'm sure the folks that, that are concerned about that too too, so thanks, Ms. Crocamo.
Okay, and we'll get back to you on that. Okay. The next comment, which I believe is from a constituent, Councilman Haas, this is from the list of your constituents that sent in questions. "Please use the recently purchased voting machines in this primary election because we need to see the flaws in it before the general election." And then they asked what the Election Board decided. The Election Board approved the paper ballots and due to the current circumstances with the pandemic and currently the shelter in place or, or order, and there is a limit right now of gatherings no greater than 10 people. It's, it's, it's a daunting task or virtually impossible task to efficiently train all the poll workers to man more than one BMD per location. Next question is, can we place signs at the normal polling places in order to direct voters to the centralized locations? Yes, this will absolutely be done. Next question, concern that some voters who have already submitted a mail-in ballot will go to the polls and vote provisionally. How do we ensure that double voting does not happen? I believe that Attorney Butera answered this question previously, but I'll ask him to again, answer the question.
Once again, every polling place will have a list of everyone who has mailed a ballot and who's, who's returned their ballot and who didn't return their ballot. If someone who did not return their ballot shows up at the polling place, they have to vote by provisional ballot. And, and the reason is, we hold that ballot and check and see if the other, if the ballot that we mailed them is sent in and only one ballot will be counted and it will be the provisional ballot, by the way. Or, or, yeah, yeah, it will be the provisional ballot unless the other ballot came in earlier. We, we, we will, we will make sure that no one votes twice in this election.
The next question and concern is similar to the previous. People who have already submitted absentee ballots are now receiving requests for mail-in ballots. What is the process to make sure that double voting does not happen? And just generally, Attorney Butera, please explain to council how we are going to prevent fraud and what our history is in Luzerne County with elections.
Well, I, you know, I, well, first of all, we, the, the poll books, when, when the ballot comes in, the poll books will reflect that the ballot has been received and, and you, you can't send in another ballot. Another ballot will not be accepted. There, there will not be two ballots sent in by the same person. That's number one. Number two, as far as vote fraud in general, Luzerne County historically had a history of vote fraud problems, but, but, but I believe that's ancient history. I don't think there's been, I, I know I've been the attorney for the Election Bureau since Home Rule started. I know there have been no vote fraud issues since Home Rule has started. And I believe for at least 10 or 15 years before, prior to that, there were no voting problems. There were, there were a lot of, there were vote fraud problems. There were a lot of vote fraud problems back in the 1960s, 1970s, 1980s and maybe into the early 1990s, but I really believe that the FBI cleaned that up. A lot of people went to jail and, and I think the elections have been cleaned since then. I, I cannot recall any incidents of voter fraud since Home Rule started. And, and if there is, if we find out, we, we would immediately report it to the FBI. It's a federal offense, it's a federal felony and anyone who attempts any voter fraud will, will be dealt with appropriately.
The, the final question is, all of Kingston is voting at Valley West Middle School. How will that site accommodate parking and follow ADA guidelines? Attorney Butera, you're more familiar with that school than I am.
I believe that that school, I, I believe that that school is ADA accessible. And I'm almost positive it is. If it is not, if anyone has.
It is. This is Linda House, it's my district.
Okay.
Your district, okay. Yeah. It's my school.
I assume that it would be.
It is ADA accessible.
Okay. All right, I would assume. But, but, but if, but if anyone has any problems voting, there will be the, the machines that, that we could take out to people in their cars or out in the parking lot. If there is a serious problem with anyone having access to the polls, we will be able to make sure that they are given an opportunity to vote.
And I, I believe that there's a, a lot across the street or near the school where people can park if they, you know, if they need extra parking.
There is a lot. Ramilda, there is a lot behind the school.
Okay.
Across the street from the school, there's a lot of parking there.
Okay, great, great. I'm not sure that this information was made public, but I'm going to give you some tallies, at least of last week, of poll workers. Under normal circumstances and with the compensation prior to the amendments, the poll work, number poll, poll workers needed were 900. The number of projected workers for the June primary is 560 and as of last week, we confirmed approximately 300. It's my understanding that there has been some increase in the number of poll workers, but it's, it's nominal at best. Amount of money budgeted for poll workers is $192,000 and the number of projected workers for November general election at this time is 1,000 poll workers. These are all the questions that were sent to us by Councilman Haas and the constituents that reached out to him.
Thanks, Mr. Butera. You know, I, I appreciate that on behalf of all the folks who asked. And I also have one more question, this is for the manager, because Penn Place is still basically closed and we went to drop off mail-in ballots yesterday, my, my own, I went to drop off my own mail-in ballot yesterday and my father and we were there and it was, was really shut down tight. And I want to know, what are we doing to let people know that want to have that option? I'm sure folks are going to be doing that, that, to make sure that we have the appropriate measures because it was a considerable wait, there was no signage, just looked like it was closed and we want to make sure we can welcome anybody who wants to drop something like that off.
You're looking, Harry, just, so you wanted, you were dropping off your, your, your application for the mail-in ballot?
No, no, not the application, the mail-in ballot itself.
Okay, well, there should be a, there should be a lockbox there. Well, then like, and then we got to get somebody in with a security there. I'll try, I'll, I'll track that down, Harry, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
No, no, absolutely, I'm not looking to grill anybody, just to make sure that we're, we make sure that it's available.
I'm, I'm happy you brought it to our attention. If that's, if, if somebody wants to walk it over, I don't see, you know, like, I don't see, you know, a reason why you won't be able to walk it over. So, I mean, there should be a lockbox there, we should post a security guard there or something with that as well, kind of like we're doing with the, the gun permits right now. Gun permits are through the roof, by the way, people dropping stuff off in that location at the courthouse. So that's a good idea, I appreciate you and I'll, I'll, I'll track that down, I'll report back.
Yep, thanks. And then, those answers. Yes, who says?
Richard Manta. I have two questions.
Right now, the council people will ask questions. You can ask at the end, okay? Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were.
Yes.
Yes, this Sheila, I have a question for David.
Go ahead.
I think this is for you, David, it might be for Mr. Butera. What is the, the number of voters that on an average vote in any of our elections, particularly a, a non-presidential one, like this primary?
I, I don't have a number.
Yeah, I want to say.
Do you have any?
I thought the 2016 elect, the 2016 primary, which was a, which was a contested primary, if you recall, for the Democratic and for the Republican nomination for president, I believe it was 40,000? I don't.
I just wanted to get an idea in comparison to the number of mail-in votes that you have now.
I have the, I have the mail-in stats. In 2016, as Dave said, 2016 was a contested Democratic primary for president and it was a contested Republican primary for president. There were 7,000 requests for absentee ballots, 7,000 plus and 6,000 plus came back and were counted. So, so as you can see, there's substantially more now and, and really, when it comes to president, there's no contest on either side.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
Go ahead, Steve, I'm sorry.
All right, actually, looking at the county website, there were, in the primary, there were 41,783 Democratic votes cast and then 37,415 Republican votes cast back in 2016.
About 80,000, roughly 80,000, approaching 80,000?
Close to, yeah, about 70, about 79,000, almost 80,000.
Yep.
So, a couple of questions I wanted to toss out. I know the Department of State has a polling web, polling site, website, so where a voter can actually look their polling place up. Was the information also, or are you going to be sending those polling place updates to the Department of State so somebody could actually put their, their name in and, and pull that information up online? Because I know, like I said, you know, I was able to go onto the Department of State website the other day, put my information in and it comes up to Toyota Pavilion, Pavilion on Cole Street. So, you know, that, that is another avenue where people can, can look their information up through, through the state website. You answered my question on the, the, how many poll workers are, are we short or still needed? The bipartisan team, who are they and how were they chosen would be a question that I have. And then.
We will get you that information.
Okay. And then, when these mail-in ballots come in, are they timestamped?
Yes.
Okay. And then I noticed like, okay, I have three that were sent to me, for instance, like applications. What is the, so, just, just to, like, for fraud prevention purposes, what, what happens, say for instance, if I gave a ballot to a non-registered voter and they sent that ballot in, is, you know, just, is it cross-checked in the database that that ballot doesn't go out to somebody?
Well, it's, it's really two steps, Steve, and the first thing is you've got three applications for the ballot.
Right, but if I. Right, but if I give one of those applications to somebody, say, for instance, a non-voter, that's somebody that's not registered, they fill it out and send it into the county.
They would not, they would not get a ballot.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, clarify that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the applications, there are numerous applications in every mailing for every registered voter. So it's the same stuff that you found on, you found on the website. But if an individual fills one out and sends it in and they're not registered, they won't, they won't be provided with a ballot.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, put that out there and for the public's knowledge, you know. Okay, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, some, Mr., somebody else wanted to.
Yeah, it's Walter, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
I have a question about, Mr. Butera said that the poll books are marked that the ballot was received. Are the poll books also marked that they were mailed out a ballot as well? Because I think that, that was the understanding, and that I was familiar with it. The moment that the Bureau sends out an apple, a ballot to a voter, that poll book is marked that a ballot was sent. Is that correct? Is that, that correct, Mr. Butera?
That is correct.
Okay, so.
That is correct, so, so we'll, we'll know that the ballot was sent and we'll know if it was received or not. And that's how we'll know when they come to the polling place, whether they have to vote provisionally or not.
Okay, well, I just wanted to put a finer, finer point on that, because I think that, that was, that was exactly right. Okay, can, and the other question is, I know back in 2019, I think when we had the big discussion about buying the election machines, the reason for the election machine was because we had to verify the vote. The, the ESNS machine obviously couldn't give the, the voter a receipt for their vote. So now, my question for you is, is, is the, the scanners counting the ballots as, as like submitted? So we can tick and tie that to the electronic poll book? So, for instance, if we had 100 voters sign the poll book, we should have 100 ballots scanned, correct?
I, I believe that's correct, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how, how the machinery works. But I, there, there, there should, there should be a correlation between.
Yeah, I, I would, I would, I would think.
Yeah.
I, I would hope that the scanners are tabulating a number for every ballot that goes through that machine, so we could track, you know, and, and the other issue obviously is going to be spoiled ballots. You know, people who color in the wrong oval, you know, all of those type of mistakes that the polling places are going to have to work with. And I, I know you have that all covered. But the other, I have another question is, if a voter insists on using a, a voting machine, I know we're going to have a machine there for the ADA and the handicapped as well. Are they going to be able to, if a voter comes in and insists to use a machine, are they going to be allowed to use a machine, or are they going to be told they can't vote?
No, they could, they'll be allowed to use a machine if they want to, if, if a voter demands to use a machine. Obviously, you know, we're, we're going to be having the, the, the paper ballots for this one, but there will be a machine at every polling place for any individual who is handicapped. But if, if somebody comes in and says, like, I have to use a machine, and it's a ballot marking device. Just so, the ballot, the, the machines that we have are ballot marking devices, so it takes the place of you filling in the oval yourself. So if an individual comes in and says, like, hey, listen, I really want to use a machine, I mean, you know, we're not going to stop you from doing that. I mean, it may be a line or something along those lines, but knock yourself out.
Okay, and, and will we, are we, Dave, will we be sending out registration, not registration cards, but polling place cards to notify the voters that their polling place has changed? Or are we just going to rely on either the press or they're going to get the information through some other way?
You know, I don't know if I have that, I was waiting on a, on a, on a, on a, on a, on a number for, to see how much that would cost. Because obviously, the Act 12 of 2020 allows us to only do it via newspaper and, and the internet. But, you know, for the second step to be like, hey, listen, you also get, you also get a post office, I mean, like a, like a postcard, like there's something like that, that's the second step. But there will be a cost associated with that, I haven't heard back on the number yet, let me track that down for you.
And, and also, pre-camvassing, do you know where they're going to do that?
I, I believe it, it's going to be on the second floor of the, of the Penn Place. And I'm not sure which room it's going to be in, it'll be outside of the election bureau. It'll be in one of those conference rooms.
Yeah, it'll have to be a pretty big room, right?
Yeah, you're right, it's going to be a pretty big, it's going to be a big conference room.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your questions. And there is a, is there, Mr. Butera, there is a voting or a board of elections meeting on the 20th, correct?
I believe it is the 20th, I, I don't have any, there is one coming up within the next two weeks, I'm not sure exactly what the date is, it's a Wednesday, is it the 20th of Wednesday?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, it's a week this Wednesday, I think it is the 20th, that's great.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, I had actually a follow-up. Somebody had texted me and they said they worked at a poll in the past. So if that person wants to work a poll, how do they get in touch with the county?
Mr. Pedrick?
Steve, that individual could either email me, Mary, or Mary Beth Steininger. Mary Beth Steininger is a, is a deputy director, she's the, she's been following through the poll workers. Or if the individual just wants to email me and I'll get it over to her, whichever easier for them. But if, if, if somebody wants to help out, I'd be, would appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just in case we, you know, we might know people too. We can put the word out, you know, through our, our means as well. And then, I, I guess, as far as the tabulators, it's going to be one tabulator per ward or precinct?
The, the scanners?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, numerous, because obviously we have numerous scanners.
What I mean is, are they going to be programmed, like each, each scanner going to be programmed for one, one precinct? Are they going to be programmed for multiple precincts?
I believe multiple precincts to cut down on the waiting lines and we'll have probably a couple. So if, if, say we're doing it at a gym, we could do a couple scanners, there's no way to wait in line.
Right, I mean, because I, I remember, you know, when I talked to you know, I think Dominion in, in the, in the past, they said normally it's like one, one scanner per precinct, but if you want to do multiples, you have to program it so it could tabulate the additional precincts. From a technological perspective.
Yeah, I mean, like, I, I, I would like it to have multiple precincts, this way anybody can walk up to any scanner. And, I mean, the goal is the individuals come in, vote safely, and they're on their way quickly as, as possible, utilizing social distancing. So I don't want people waiting in lines or anything like that, so the quicker we can get them moving, the better.
Right, okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Moving down to number three. This is an ongoing situation, every year we get a request from the Hazel and Public Transit in regards to the local match from the state operating assistance. I think you, in your packet tonight, you have that request. And you have the information that was provided by the Hazel and Transit, the letter from them, and also the information that was sent to them from the Department of Transportation. I think, Mr. Pedry, I think you received this information and then forwarded it to us. Any questions in that regard, Mr. Pedry?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Sheila, isn't this the issue where we asked contribution from Skookil and another county?
Carvin.
And they, and they refused?
They have in the past. We're still pursuing that. I think Mr. Pedry has some other information that he received late this afternoon?
Yeah, so, you know, I was working on this, on this matter, I was going to reach out to Representative Mike Carroll, who's the chair of the transportation. There have been some discussions, I believe, in Harrisburg regarding that the county will not, potentially could not have to provide their match to a transit authority. And that transit authority could still receive the state match. In the past, if the county didn't put that money up, the state wouldn't have to do that. So I'm going to track that information down. Obviously, this would only be for this year to deal with the coronavirus issue. If the county does do that, we're talking about $800,000 to our general fund between Hazleton and LCTA. I don't know what that does to Hazleton or LCTA's budgets. And I think that's a conversation that the county council has to have with them, if that's available or an option even. But if, you know, council has, we have two weeks till this will be voted on. You know, I'll get that information from Representative Mike Carroll and hopefully we'll make a determination as to whether or not the county has to provide the match. Either way, even if, even if we do have to provide the match, obviously Hazleton Transit has been a longstanding partner with us for a lot of years, provides amazing service to the citizens of Lower Loser County, and we've continually supported them. The question is whether or not this year, the state will come up with some sort of a, a different funding program just to deal with the coronavirus. That would be a huge assistance to the county budget that we are already in the midst of a, of a concern.
And we hope that we'll have more information by the next meeting, am I correct, Mr. Pedry?
Correct, I'll reach out to Mike Carroll and we'll go from there.
Okay, so we'll be getting more information forthcoming. But I did want to put it on the agenda so everybody knew that the request is out there. And hopefully, if we get the other information, we'll forward that information out. So everybody will have that prior to us deciding on as to the vote for that assistance.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead.
Regarding the Hazleton Transit.
Yes.
The only concern that I have, and I know Mr. Urban brought this up at many council meetings regarding the contribution, as Sheila just brought up as well. I, I don't, first of all, Hazleton City Transit Authority is an authority created by Hazleton. It's not an authority?
No, it's, it's part of the Hazel City government.
But it's, it's approved by the government of Hazleton City, correct?
I think so.
Yeah, and, and they, and they approve the hiring, the firings, they approve the purchasing of buses and all of those things. And county council, we have no say, we have no say. But, but my, and my question is, is, you know, they're looking for $180,000 match. And Hazleton City, I don't know what their contribution is, does anybody know what that contribution is from the city to their match? Do they match any money?
I don't know if anybody knows, we certainly can ask that question.
I would, I would, I would support that what we should do is we should split that, we should split that by four ways, quite honestly. I, I mean, I think Hazleton City has an obligation, Carvin County has an obligation, Skookil has an obligation. And if Loser County wants to support them, we certainly could support them. But I'm, I don't think we should support the whole 180,000 all by ourselves, considering we have no say in that operation of that bus service, any more than we do with the Loser County Flood Authority. Loser County Flood Authority is the same situation, where we are making the people of Kingston and Fort Worth, Swerville pay a fee, because the county can't, doesn't pony up any money, yet Hazleton City is getting money for their transit. And I don't, I just don't think we're, we're making it a fair, a split here for that. And I, I, I'm not adverse to the service, I think they do a great job. But I do think that they should be part of LCTA. That's something that LCTA should be tackling as an authority. They should be bringing that, that transit company into LCTA. And that way, maybe they could help fund their 180,000 match. So I, I just don't think continually giving $180,000 to Hazleton City Transit, when we don't have any authority or any kind of say, we don't appoint anybody to the board, we have no say whether they buy a $500,000 bus, you know, what, who they hire, how they run their operation. I just don't think that's good fiduciary responsibility on the county's part.
Well, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Griffith, but there was some information that was provided last year in regards to this request. And Hazel had talked to Carvin County and Skookil County. Their contributions would be rather small, based on their ridership information, something like $10,000 and $20,000. So that was something that was provided last year, we could certainly update that. As far as the request to bring them into LCTA, I believe before home rule began, PennDOT had pursued that strongly. And even when we came on with home rule in 2012, I think many of us remember that there were two members from Greater Hazel who were on that LCTA board because of the merger that was going to be supported. They, neither one stayed with that. PennDOT backed off from pursuing that merger. And that's where we've been over the period of time. Hazel City, we can ask that question as far as what kind of contribution they have made or will make. And then we'll have all that information for the next time we meet. So people will know that before any decision is reached.
Yeah, I, I certainly understand all that, Mr. McGinley. And I, I did participate, I was public, I was at the meetings for those. And, and this is an ongoing issue, that I just think that at some point along the way, somebody else needs to step up and try and contribute. And I know, I think Carvin County, when Ralph Sharp was here, when Mr. Urban brought the issue up at the last budget meeting, I think he said, I think he said that Carvin County or Skookil County said they weren't interested in contributing any money. And, and, and I think that's unfortunate, because they do, they do benefit from that service, as much as the, our residents from Loser County do as well. But I just don't think it's fair for Loser County, who's, you know, $230 million in debt, to try and, you know, bolster up a, a transit authority that, or transit system that we really don't have any say in operation of. And we can't say, we don't think you should buy a bus right now, we should wait. So we don't have any say. So if, if we could get that answer as to what Hazleton City does, that would be helpful for my, for my information next week, that'd be great.
Well, two weeks probably, Mr. Griffith, but yes, we'll get that information. Okay? Any other questions in regards to the request from Hazel and Transit? Moving down to number four. Audit Services, we have prepared an RFP, the audit committee has reviewed it and feels that it is appropriate at this point in time. The charter is very specific in that we must change auditors at least every four years. The audit actually would be done in 2021, but would be for this year, budget 2020, that would be the first year, and then you would go forward. We've done three years with a fourth year option traditionally through the RFP. So the RFP is there for your information. There was one addition to the RFP, which was a peer review that was added. Ms. Howe recommended that based on her experiences with some prior RFPs for audits. So that's been added to the former RFP. Any questions in that regard? If not, this will be on the agenda for the next meeting, so that we can get it out in the month of June, so that we can follow the timeline and get the information back. So we have a recommendation early fall or late summer, so that, you know, we can have the transition between the two audit groups that will have, the one that will be leaving and the one that will be coming on. Okay? Number five is, this is a report, titled the Lipton Report. It's a report that was done by a gentleman that was contracted for. Mr. Swets and Mr. Pedry, maybe you want to speak to the report, please?
Sure, I'll take it, Mr. McGinley, it's Brian. The report was a report that the RFP was put out in 2019. The $10,000 down payment was paid out of the 2019 budget. So of the total contract, $10,000 was paid in 2019. Mr. Lipton sat down with various departments, because it was, thought that there is interaction between the departments and budget and finance. Example would be if an agency did not have their own staff accountant and put extra pressure or time constraints on budget and finance, that could be something to look into. So he was trying to get a full picture, not just look at what the auditors had looked at. The auditors look at something and give us the findings, and that's their job. He was trying to get to the root cause and make some suggestions for the county to clear items that have been in the report.
Okay, questions for Mr. Swets?
Mr. McGinley, I have.
Go ahead.
Well, the biggest, the first question that I have is, why did, why did the budget and the finance department and the manager do this RFP and contract for this person to do the investigation or the review of the findings from the, from the auditors, when that is clearly, I think, a function of the council charter? The county council in 209B9, it says, we're supposed to do investigations and reviews. And I think it's certainly not an arms-length transaction if the budget and finance director is asking someone to check his procedures. I don't think that's an arms-length transaction for the manager. I mean, he's actually auditing their work. I, I talk about, I think, segregation of duties, I don't think that's separation of duties at all. That should have been something that should have been done by council and clearly been reviewed by council and had nothing to do with budget and finance. I mean, other than the fact that the auditors put that report out that said there were segregation of duty issues. segregation of duty issues. So that's, that's my first concern with the whole audit process. The second audit process question that I have is, in his contract, it said, the description of the contract was to gather, identify, and collect information to assist County Budget and Finance in clearing internal control deficiencies from county audits. Yet what we ended up getting is a report that cost us over $19,000. And in that report, we looked at every single department in the county. We looked at the Controller's Office, we looked at, we looked at the County Council, we looked at the Charter, we looked at all of these things that are clearly not the scope of Budget and Finance or the, or the scope of the request for proposal. So I don't, I don't understand why Mr. Lipton decided he was going to go out and do an interview of everybody in the county and, and go through this whole process when that's what the Controller is supposed to be doing according to our Charter. Our Charter says that the Controller does that job. So I think we spent $19,000 on a report, although there are certain things in the report that are very beneficial to the Budget and Finance Department, segregation of duties, you know, all of those things that were written up in his report that pertain to the audit process. But clearly, he stepped way over the scope of, of what the purpose of that review was, and he said it was going to cost us anywhere from 12,000 to 15,000, and then it went to 19,000. And it just seems like, you know, it says cash cow on our forehead at the county when anybody ever tries to say or do anything for us. It's like, okay, well, we'll just do whatever we need to do and they'll pay us. I, I don't think what he did was within the scope of what he was contracted for initially. Now, if he got permission from somebody to go ahead and go to the other sections, that's perfectly fine. But I think that is clearly not the scope of that report. The termination date was supposed to be 12/31/19, and we're already in May, according to his contract. So I don't understand why we allowed him to go over till, till May. And I know this reports come up many, many times regarding what the, you know, how far along he's, he's gone with this report. I know we already paid him, so some of the information that he gave us is beneficial information. However, it was, it just seems like he doesn't put a lot of meat into stuff other than say, well, we need more people in Budget and Finance. Well, yeah, okay. The Budget and Finance Department ran with three people before. I think we have eight there now. He didn't identify, he didn't identify what the duties of everybody in that office are in his report. He just said that we need more people. So I, I don't, you know, I, although I, I think some of the things he brought up were very beneficial, I think we paid $19,000 for a report that clearly I think we could have got from either the Controller or, you know, I mean, segregation of duties are something that I would think that the Budget and Finance Director would be able to fix on his own without having a report from somebody outside the county saying, well, what you have to do is make sure people that handle money don't count the money too. I would think that that would be like a no-brainer for the Budget and Finance Director or Division Head who's making over $80,000. But maybe, maybe not, I don't know. But I just think that we're, we're spending a lot, $19,000 on something, and what was the process on that? Was it bid? It doesn't say it has to be bid over 25,000, but the purchasing policy says you're supposed to get three quotes. Did we get three quotes on that? Even though, you know, I, I just don't know where we picked this Lipton guy from. How did that happen?
Well, I think, Mr. Swetts, am I correct? Didn't you say you had an RFP on the street for this? Mr. Swetts? Mr. Swetts?
I got you, Mr. McGinley, I'm sorry, I was on mute. I'm not sure if we had an RFP, I know there was, that we had a contract, the contract said from 12,000 to 15,000, this work was to be done at the end of 2019. We wanted a complete report. The idea of the report was to give Budget and Finance some guidance on how to clear these things. Yes, to Mr. Griffith's point, some of them were very simple, but our office, since the beginning of Home Rule, we've completed multiple audits in one year. We're trying to get rid of something that's been hanging out there and provide information to not only the council but the public. You know, whether that be through the budget reports, whether that be through the position list, there's been great advances made, but at the expense of not clearing some old findings. So we're looking for some guidance on what have other counties done, what have other governments done to clear this up, and that's why he was brought in. I think one of the reasons some of the other offices were involved was, one of Mr. Lipton's comments was, he doesn't think the Controller's Office has enough money in the budget. And this was pre-pandemic, we knew nothing about this. He thinks that, you know, those were things that, yes, it wasn't in the BNF, but maybe part of the reason that the Controller doesn't do what Mr. Griffith thinks is they don't have enough money in the budget. That's from a third party, that didn't come from me, I didn't prompt him to say that. So there was more than just looking at the Budget and Finance findings, and that's why there was interplay with the other departments and why other departments were interviewed.
Well, the Controller is getting $65,000 a year, I would certainly hope she'd be able to do that process. And again, that's, that's just something for you and I to discuss, but I'm just saying that I think the report that we paid money for is something that was way, extended way past the scope of the intent of what you were looking for. I think the information that he gave us is beneficial, I mean, we paid 19,000, I certainly hope we're going to use the information. But I think most of the stuff that he gave us, the stuff that we could have gave, got from our own employees who are making substantial amounts of money as salary to do those type of things. And it's disturbing to me that we go out and spend $19,000 on a report that we should have gotten from somebody's salary that's already being paid, and more importantly is the fact that, you know, it wasn't put out and getting three telephonic quotes as the purchasing policy says. I know it wasn't put out for RFP because I didn't see one out there. So he also billed us on 9/28, 9/28 in his bill he charged us, and that was a Saturday, and he said he interviewed the Office of Law on a Saturday. Now, if he did, that's good, but I would certainly be double-checking that information to make sure that on 9/28, he actually did an interview of the Office of Law and accounts payable, because I don't think they were here on 9/28. So if you could check the invoice on that, that would be helpful as well. But I just think we paid $19,000 of taxpayers' money for something that we probably could have got from our employees.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Linda?
Go ahead.
You know, on this report, I, I understood that it was supposed to be a consultant to help us rectify some of the issues that were identified in our audits already. And the first several pages of this report, everything that deals with Budget and Finance is really a restatement of everything that we have been reading in the audit findings for the last few years. And I get it, there were a few years where we did two audits in one year, we completed two audits in one year, but those years are several years ago already. We've been doing one audit a year for a number of years now, and we still see the same findings. But what this report did was basically restate what the auditors that we're paying $110,000 a year to do an audit have already stated to us every year. We know there's, those are the problems. What we need to do is fix them. I don't think we needed to pay someone else to restate the problems for us, they've been restated every year for a number of years now. I'm not sure where the scope of it went, how the scope of it got expanded to cover the rest of the county. But my understanding of this going into it was that it was going to be just to help rectify the problems in Budget and Finance, not to point out, oh yeah, we still have this problem. That's all.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila.
Yes, go ahead.
To a certain extent, I, I agree, because when I was reading the beginning of the report, many of those issues had been brought up by the auditors. But then when we got to like the DA's office, that they should have a bad check program, and each of the other offices, I thought, is this a county, is this a county report? Or is this Budget and Finance? I was confused. I thought it was for correcting our problems with the auditors, like the to and from issues. But it seemed that it, it was much more expansive than it should have been.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would like to get council's feeling on whether it should have went through Budget and Finance at all. It should have been done through council. I, I don't think this was an arms-length transaction, having Budget and Finance audit themselves, or, or the manager having Budget and Finance audited. They're under, they're under the administrative side.
All right. First of all, I don't believe it was an audit that Mr. Lipton did. You know, like Ms. Houck indicated, we pay an auditor $110,000 to do an audit. This is a $19,000 document that we have in front of us.
But do you agree, do you agree that they, you know, they, they're looking at the person who they're, do you see a conflict here? I see a big conflict, that we're, we're hiring a guy to look at ourselves.
Well, I don't see a major conflict. I do think we had to make corrections that were pointed out in the audit. I was hopeful that this report would help us deal with that, so we would get a lot of those corrections taken off the audit so that our audit would be cleaner as we go forward. I didn't expect all of them to be taken off in one year, but I did want, I was hopeful that we would see progress. So that was my hope. Obviously, this was something that was, you know, we, council did not have a part in authorizing it, soliciting it, et cetera. I don't have any more.
Mr. McGinley?
Sorry.
Yep, it's Linda Houck. If I could just also say, you know, some of the recommendations that he made also in here, like having a comprehensive operating and policy manual and things like that. Those things were brought by the Strategic Initiatives Committee probably three or four years ago, and we had, when we were actively meeting, and we were trying to work on, on best practices for effective government, and we had, had some of the administrative team in on those meetings, and they assured us that all of that stuff was going on, that they were developing manuals like that. This is not something that nobody on council ever thought of. These are actually things that we have been trying to get put in place since 2012, and there was a concerted effort to do it, and we've had assurances from the management that it's all being worked on. So now we paid somebody to tell us, yeah, you still need to work on it, but we've known it all along, and it has been addressed. It's not like most of these things have not been ever talked about in council meetings.
So, so Mr. McGinley, my question is, what are we going to do with the report? We, we have a $19,000 report that says we're supposed to do certain things. Who's going to follow up on that report to make sure those things are done? And are we going to set goal, are we going to set goals to, to make sure that they're accomplished and, and make the $19,000 worth of our own?
I would hope the Audit Committee would, would, the next time we meet, which is towards the end of May, as, as we know, would, now that we have the report in front of us, I would hope the Audit Committee would sit down with the members of the administration who are part of that group and say, here's the ones, the audit findings that we would like to have cleared up. What is our plan? What is our plan to clear those up?
Do you want, do you want to make, is that, is that something you want to make for certain, that the Audit Committee will be responsible for that then?
I think the Audit Committee is the perfect place to start.
We did that with the Audit Committee last year and the year before. We sat down with Budget and Finance and the manager, and we, we had a corrective action plan that they were supposed to be following. We did this two years in a row, and we were sure that there was a plan of action to make those corrections. So what happened?
I would suggest maybe the Legislative Committee or the Strategic Committee, but I don't, you know, somebody, somewhere along the line has to follow up on a report that we spent $19,000 on to make sure at least we get the things addressed.
Mr. Chair, can I make some brief comments? It's Brian. It'll be quick, it's just a summary. So I just want to let everyone know that we're actively, you will see these things being implemented, not every single thing, in this audit. So we're working on the 2019 audit for 2020. There's been things that were in this report and that were talked about that you will see either off the audit report completely, or this is the last year to see if this was in place. My team has chapters of a manual that I have to review. The findings about a manual for ADP, we're already turning to Mr. Johns. We won't have all 14, but we've actively gone through these from the prior meetings with the Audit Committee and some advice on where to look for Mr. Lipton to clear these findings up, which was the whole point of the report, was to get last repeat findings.
Yeah, if I could just add, if I could just add from the, from our perspective, you know, we're going to take this, the, the information that was provided to us by the Lipton report, sit down with our team, implement those policies, get them into this audit. I think the best way for council to review this is after the 2019 audit is issued. It looks like we are on track for an on-time, unqualified audit for, for 2019. After that audit is issued, and it would show the findings in 2018, and then hopefully some of those removed findings for the 2019 audit through this, the report, you'll see the difference there. And then that may be a good time for everybody to sit down and say, okay, what's the next steps, what, where we move from here? But you'll see the, the, the fruit of the report in the audit, the 2019 audit.
Okay. My request would be to Mr. Swetts and his team, whoever is necessary, when we have our audit meeting, if you would point out or have a list or whatever, however you want to itemize it, of the items that have been appearing in the findings that you believe will be removed or consolidated, or whatever the proper term would be, if you would have that ready for that meeting, we will share that with all of council once the Audit Committee has that. And then the second part to that, Mr. Swetts, would be, I believe, once some of those are cleared up, what is the next group of findings that we've been seeing over the many years that we would direct our attention to and hopefully clear those off? Is that something that we can accomplish, Mr. Swetts?
We could certainly get a list and what our next group is for the meeting, for the next Audit Committee meeting at the end of May. We can certainly do that.
And then we'll share that with council, so everyone has an idea of what's being done and what our plan is going forward.
Mr. McGinley, I was also concerned, I was also concerned about the fact that he said New World and Cronos needs to be consolidated into a different operating system. We just bought New World, spent lots of money to use it, and, and we have somebody come in from outside, much like we did with the salary issue that we had where everybody ended up getting raises and, and all the other stuff, some outside concern, somebody with a briefcase comes in and says, well, I think you need to get rid of New World and, and Cronos and get another system that works together. I, I just don't, I don't, I just don't see the, the fruit to that. I don't see the ability for us to just scrap a accounting system based on somebody from outside the area that comes in and says, well, we don't think that you should have two different systems, you should have one. And, and who's going to tell the district attorney that the bad check program needs to be implemented as an independent officer and the controller that she's not doing her job? I, I don't know who has the authority to do that.
I don't know if we have the authority, but we certainly can provide the report with that information. And as far as the relationship between New World and Cronos, my personal opinion is Cronos should go. I think we're paying a lot of money for that, and I don't know if we're getting the proper information from it, so.
I, I'd like to know who's using it and who's not.
Well, I don't have that information either.
Because, because back in the day when we put it in, everybody was supposed to use it, including Bob Lawton, he used it.
Yep, there were. Another major topic right here, the reopening of the county. This has been discussed far and wide among many different groups. We've seen a lot in the media today and yesterday, and over the weekend. And I know that Ms. McDermott and Mr. Pedrick have spoken, and Ms. McDermott is the Chair of the Crisis Committee that deals with private industry. So we'll start with Ms. McDermott and then Manager Pedrick, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. Being the Chair of the Private Sector Committee, I was asked to reach out to my committee to help draw up a proposal to request that the Governor reconsider moving us to the yellow phase and start to open our county before June 4th. We need help to sustain our businesses. However, we have to open our businesses in the safest and most responsible way so that we don't cause a spike in positive cases that would cause us to revert back to the red phase. It is very important that our business owners are able to open and that we start to revive our economy. We have to ensure the Governor that our businesses will follow proper PPE guidelines to keep customers and employees safe. We need to have the ability and capability to handle the cases that come up and have a plan in place for when cases reappear. Our healthcare providers have to agree that they are ready and have enough supplies to safely handle future cases, especially if there would be a spike in cases. In order to move to the yellow phase, the state looks at a two-week period and requires counties to have fewer than 500, or I'm sorry, 50 new confirmed cases per 100,000 residents. Based on approximately 317,000 people in Loseran County, that would mean 150 or less positive cases in a 14-day period. From May 1st up to today, we have had 306 positive cases. Currently, numbers are based on ZIP codes, and if we can exempt some ZIP codes, our numbers could stay below that threshold. With all of that being said, it's very frustrating to business owners that the date to reopen keeps being moved by the Governor. Some businesses have fallen between the cracks and are not able to receive any funding provided. Some people are not getting unemployment compensation. These people are desperate and feel that they are not being helped or heard. It's very important that as elected officials, we stand up for the people that are hurting. We need to try to restart our economy. We need to try to restart our economy, and I hope that I have the support of the rest of county council.
Manager Pedri?
Yeah, I, I echo what Councilwoman McDermott said. She, you know, when I, when I put this Crisis Committee into place, I thought about the different aspects of the entire crisis across the entire county, and Ms. McDermott and the private sector community have been doing some really impressive things. And where we're at right now is, listen, we are improving. The citizens of Luzerne County have heard the request of the governor, and he did that request, and listened to everything the Department of Health has been telling us, and has stayed inside and quarantined, and we've missed so many different events in order to fix these things. And you know what? We flattened the curve. When I first started this coronavirus, challenging this coronavirus, my first couple of phone calls were to see if we had to get additional morgue space, if we had to get additional hospital space, where we are with respirators. We were looking at a potential death rate of 1% of the entire county. That's 3,000 people. Thank God that we're not there, but it's only because of the hard work of the citizens of Luzerne County who have stepped up to the plate and listened to and done the quarantine. I am not completely naive though as to what the numbers truly are. We are still eighth in the state. The Luzerne, if you look at Luzerne County as a whole, the coronavirus is still alive and well unfortunately within Luzerne County. Today, we have 2,449 cases and over 120 deaths. If you look at, what's the next steps though, is where we need to be, be working on. So my plan would be, and I'm asking for council to review this, I'm opening this up to the, the table, I want your suggestions, I want your ideas, would be that we would be submitting a plan to the Department of Health. I don't think that we should just say we're opening no matter what, Mr. Wolf, good luck to you in future endeavors, but what we should be doing is partnering with the state to say, hey, listen, Luzerne County has a case to open up sooner than June 4th. One of those major factors is testing. I put the Luzerne County testing facilities up against almost any other county across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We currently have five testing sites, the Mohegan Sun Arena, the Rite Aid, and three healthcare providers. We have the testing sites available, and even with these testing sites available, our numbers are decreasing. We understand, we are still in the top 10, and we still have it here, but there should be a way to us to safely open prior to June 4th if we work with the Department of Health and we provide them with a necessary plan in place. So a couple of different factors. We're gonna be working with the private sector community. We wanna get their input and put together a plan, and I, and I applaud Councilwoman McDermott for what she's done so far and what she will be doing over these next couple of days to get this plan in place. I want that plan to be reviewed by our medical community. I want that plan to then be reviewed by our doctors to say, yes, this would work, this would, we'll move forward from here. And then finally, we have to reach out to our businesses, and this is where our chambers of commerce come into play and the other committees that I put in place to the coronavirus pandemic, Crisis Committee. Our businesses need to be ready to move to yellow, so that when the governor does say, yes, Luzerne County, you are correct, you work with us, you've done everything you possibly could, you're out of this, you're moving to yellow in this state, our businesses are available and ready. Do they have a necessary PPE? Do they have a necessary cleaning supplies? Are they doing the right things for their own constituents? We're not out of the woods. Moving to yellow doesn't mean a return to life as normal. I, you know, I'm not sure when we're gonna see a return to life as normal, but we have to start the process. Luzerne County economy, as everybody on this council knows, was growing exponentially in the last four years. We saw an increase of over 3,000 jobs. We paid off over $200 million of debt by this county council in, in, to Luzerne County. We're doing all the right things to jumpstart the economy. To have this come along now has been very, very detrimental to us, just like everybody else, and we gotta look out for the small businessman. Let's take it into account. Let's put together a plan that says, we understand where we're at, we understand where we're going, but most importantly, we're gonna do it safely. I wanna work with the Department of Health on it, and I would open it up to the floor from county council to see if there's any suggestions, anything we should put into this plan to show that we are professional, we are precise, and we are providing a, a necessary plan to the Department of Health so that we can show that we are ready.
Okay, questions, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Okay, Mr. Haas first, and then Ms. Sabin next, please. Go ahead, Ms. Haas.
First of all, thanks for putting this on the agenda. You know, obviously, we're the elected council people here, we hear from people across the county. There are so many people that are very upset, not just business owners, but working-class people, working poor, you know, I sit on one of the COVID committees or work with the at-risk populations, and every day that we're sheltered, people that are working for an hourly wage out there are tremendously suffering, and we're not gonna see, every day that we prolong this, I think we're looking at another week or two to recovery, because people are gonna be behind on their, on their mortgage payments, on their rent payments, and that's what, what my committee's been talking about. But that being said, I understand what Dave's talking about. Let's be professional, let's really put forth good suggestions for this, because it's, I think people are rightfully skeptical about how arbitrary this is, is really looking as we're going forward. As Dave just said, the curve has been flattened, so there, I don't wanna minimize the people that have, have been dealing with COVID, that have been infected by it, and for, and for those who have, who have passed away, it's a total tragedy. But at the same time, we've gotta open our businesses, because people are going bankrupt, and we are gonna say goodbye to businesses that are shutting the doors. We've seen the papers, we, we've seen the closing. So I think what, what the people out there are looking at, what are the next very positive steps that we can take as a county? And I, I appreciate talking to Ramilda a little bit yesterday, that we don't have that much authority, or at least as much authority as the public thinks we do. I know that local jurisdictions have an awful lot to say, and because we're a very diverse county, that we have a, we have a lot of rural and a lot of urban areas, we have a lot of manufacturing in some parts and some not much industry. So I, I think a big step is to really break our own county down. We know county, we know Hazleton's been a hotspot, and we just had some cases this past weekend with the data, but other areas or counties that are, are almost like a 45-minute drive away from Hazleton are, are not seeing that same kind of condition. So Dave, my suggestion, number one, is I think we have different zones of our county that are dealing with different situations, and I think we need some local elected officials even on board with this, some township supervisors, and some, some council people from the boroughs and even our city councils across, across the county. Secondly, I think we need to really look at if, if the governor is really obstinate, I mean, he said some pretty nasty things on TV yesterday, and, you know, past his precedent when he vetoed the entire budget about five years ago, and counties and localities and schools out to dry for nine months without any state funds coming in, people had to shut, almost had to shut their doors. And this, it just smells of that, and I, I really wanna use this platform to, again, extend the olive branch to the governor, to come alongside us and really work with us for the betterment of all the people. It's easy to paint with a wide brush at the state level. Pennsylvania is a very diverse state economically and geographically, and, and we're very different than even some of our neighbors here just in Luzerne County. So I, I think if, if we take a look at this, and, and show that, that people are hurting here, that I, I think it's a lot of common sense when we look at, at our department stores, I'm sorry, grocery stores, and wine mom and pop stores are, are not held to the same standard, and they don't get to have business while these other bigger institutions do, which is really unfair, and a lot of people sense it. I also think that when we reevaluate some of these other jobs out there, I, I don't know why we can't do landscaping work or contract work, where people don't, there's social distancing by just the nature of the job, and we see a lot of these people are rightfully upset that they're, they're losing their businesses and their livelihoods. And the, the only other thing that I really wanted to draw our attention to is, when we have declared an emergency, a disaster here, a state emergency for Luzerne County, what does that mean if we just don't keep that declaration going? I mean, we, we're extending every few days. What does that mean to get federal funds from the CARES Act? What does that mean to get state help? Because I think that's the first step. If we just don't declare the, the county state of emergency, then I think a lot of doors will start to natural, open up naturally. So thanks for hearing me out, I'm sorry, I was a little long-winded there, but I've been talking to a lot of people about this. A lot of people are extremely upset. Thank you.
Well, this, I think you recognize, Mr. Haas, that May 1st, construction industry was allowed to open up again, so that is one industry that has changed on May 1st. Ms. Sabin?
Yes. I don't know where people are getting the fact that we've flattened our curve. I'm looking at the page, it's for COVID-19, on, it's at the bottom of everything on the Weather Channel, and it says, you know, Luzerne has really 2,500 cases basically, 120 deaths. That was a 7.4% increase since last week in terms of the confirmed cases, and a 15.3% increase in terms of deaths. I'm looking at the, the graph on the bottom, and although it's not going up steeply, it is going up, at least the, the one I have for this past week. Now, I appreciate, I feel terrible for the people that haven't gotten the checks and I, and, and that they need and that they can lose their businesses, but I think you have to be very careful about this. I mean, David, I don't really know how old you are, but I'm in one of the definitely vulnerable categories. I, you know, I, I am one of the people that has a 98% chance, if I come in contact with it, of getting it and dying. 98% of people over 70. So, and whoever it was, I can't remember at the beginning, you know, 72 is not, I mean, that's maybe what the workers' comp uses as an average lifespan, that's not what life insurance does. You know, life insurance can go way up. You might have to pay more for it, but it can go way up, and the increases have been significant in terms of lifespans, much higher for women than men. So I'm not willing to say, well, 70, I, I've kinda lived my life out. I just think if you're going to do this, first of all, I also don't understand, because Luzerne County, as David said, we're eighth in the state in terms of the number of cases and the number of deaths we have. You know, we have more than Allegheny County. We're behind Philadelphia, Montgomery, Delaware, I think Lehigh, and I'm not sure what else. I thought it was we were five or six. But I think it's hard to say, you know, we're ready to go into the yellow, when you look at all the counties, and you say, we still have, we're still eighth in the state in terms of this. I don't know if Rachel Levine would say, yeah, I think you can go back. I mean, they didn't let Susquehanna go back, or Wyoming County, and I, I mean, they are rural, and they're, and they're very angry, but I think Luzerne is in a little bit different situation.
Okay, anyone else?
If I could just jump in there, Ms. Sabin, I, I fully, I, I agree with you. I, I do think we're in a different situation than in Wyoming County. I was talking to Commissioner Henry, he has 30 cases up there. I think that's a different story. The most important factor of, of the plan that we're working with throughout this process though is, it will be in conjunction with the Department of Health. We wanna get a plan together, get, provide it to them, work with them on the process as opposed to just, we're, we're not gonna blanketly declare we're open for business, does the chips fall where they may. I think the whole process will be, we have a, we have a clear, precise processal plan, work with the Department of Health, be a partner to them, and then hopefully we'll get there prior to June.
Well, that would be great, David, if you can do that. What I was upset about this week is when I was reading the emails, Walter had an email out there to other legislators, and Leanne had a couple emails, and it said that county council was in agreement. Well, I don't know if county council is all in agreement about this situation, and I don't wanna be represented by a statement that for me is not what, what is correct. Not, it's not how I feel at this point.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead, who's that, Ms. Hauck?
It's Linda, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have a couple of que, well, I have a question first, so just to clarify this, what, I, I wanna be clear about what the suggestion is. Is it that we will put a plan in place for how we will gradually reopen once the Department of Health puts us in the yellow zone? Or is it what we're seeing in some other places in the country, which is that people are challenging the governor and the Department of Health and trying to put ourselves in the yellow zone? Which is it?
It's actually neither.
You wanna respond to that first, and then Mr.?
Well, I'd like to hear from Ms. McDermott, because she's the one who brought it up, yes.
Yeah, that's why I asked, Ms. McDermott, please respond to that first.
Yes. We, we certainly wanna do this in the proper way. We don't wanna just go out there and say, you know, we want, we wanna go to yellow, and we're gonna do it whether you like it or not. I think the frustration from these other counties and why they did that was because they were not getting a response from the governor's office. When you're looking at such low numbers in Susquehanna County and Wyoming County, they reached out to the governor's office and did not get any response. We could put together this proposal, we hope that it will be received. Eddie DePachinski said he could make sure that the governor's office does definitely get it and respond, but what it is, is a request to reconsider moving us to the yellow phase before June 4th. Of course, we want everybody to be safe, and that's why I said we need to have our businesses have the proper protocol to keep customers and employees safe, but we also have to understand that people who are not making money are desperate, and what, what are they to do? My mother is 91, my stepdad's 93, they don't go out, I don't go to see them. It hurts me to not be able to do that, just like so many other people. So anybody that's at high risk and susceptible definitely have to be safe, but it's not fair to be, have everyone else quarantined forever when we can start opening up businesses safely. Again, not, you know, going right to green, all we're suggesting is trying to move to phase, yellow phase before June 4th. And again, trying to do it in the proper way, stating how we would do it, how our businesses are gonna follow the protocols, and, and put that plan, and hopefully have the input from all of council, and be able to send that to the governor's office and, and have him receive it and review it, and reconsider, you know, opening.
Okay, so, you know, I, I appreciate that. June 4th is really a little over two weeks away at this point, so I, I think that we all need to, to think about the fact that we're one county, and I hear a lot of people talk about, you know, it's, it's isolated in Hazleton. Well, it isn't isolated in Hazleton, but you know what, if I, and I don't live in Hazleton, but I have listened for the last nine years to people from Hazleton who have felt that they've been disenfranchised by this county for a long time, and if I did live in Hazleton, I would, would feel like this attempt to kinda put Hazleton off in its own corner and say that Hazleton is the only one part with the problem, I would, I would not be too happy to hear that, because I think as county council, we need to represent everyone in the county, and that includes Hazleton. And I also hear people say, well, it's Hazleton and it's nursing homes, but you know what you also have to understand is that it's not just nursing homes, because people work in the nursing homes. It's not like people who reside in nursing homes are there on their own. There are workers that go in there, and then they go home, and they mingle in the community. And the more you open your community up and allow people who are coming in contact and moving in and out of areas that are maybe hotspots in our county, the more you open us up, as Dr. Fauci said today, to unnecessary and avoidable suffering and death. And, you know, you talk about flattening the curve, I'm kind of looking at the same thing that Sheila is, but when they say that our numbers of new cases are down, it's, it is, it's flattening the curve of new cases, but it's not flattening the curve of active cases. The number of active cases is still going up, you're just not seeing as large of an increase. And there's a big difference between saying that we've got this thing under control, which the medical experts are not saying that we've got it under control, and between saying that we've got it under control, or that we're just not adding as many new cases, we continue to add new cases. I just think it's, it's a pretty risky thing. I would rather take my advice from the medical professionals, the Department of Health, and proceed with some caution, because I don't wanna see any more people die than is absolutely necessary. And I, I just... And I, I just, I know it's been a tough time, but I'm a child of someone who lived through World War II, who lived through the depression, and we're having a tough time after two and a half months of asking us to be wearing masks and to be isolated. I don't know how this county would have lived through World War II. And the people that did live through World War II are probably looking at us and wondering how we would have ever made it through those times.
One thing I want to say, Dr. Fauci also did say that we need to have the ability and capability to handle the cases that come up and have a plan in place for when those cases appear. And that's why I said we need our healthcare providers on board with it. If we don't have the support from them feeling that they're able to handle new cases if there's a spike, then of course we can't proceed, but if they're able to do that, then, then it's also a, a better thing. Testing and contact tracing is important, and like, like David said, we have five testing places now. Contact tracing is something that the government has to get out to us. But it's something that what if June 4th comes and the governor moves it again? I think we'll?
Okay, uh, other people who would like to speak? Any council members?
I would, Mr. Chair, unless someone else wants to go beforehand.
Well, anybody else first, Mr. Haas, because you had your one time. Anyone else, any other member of council who has not spoken?
Yes, Mr. McGinley, Mr. Snead.
Go ahead, Mrs. Snead.
Uh, I applaud, uh, Ms. McDermott for, uh, going ahead, uh, with what she's, uh, doing here. Uh, I, I want to make one thing, uh, clear, because I've been listening to, uh, radio talk shows and stuff like that, and they're making it out to be Republicans against Democrats, Democrats against Republicans. If, if we're going to get through this, we got to get through this as one. Let's not blame each other. Let's come up with right ideas that gets us through this. That, that's the first point. The second point, not that you have to paint Luzerne County with a whole brush, but, uh, Ms. Howt touched on the Hazelton area. Uh, that's been well documented, uh, through the New York Times and 60 Minutes, uh, where 10% of our officers, uh, have come down with it. 60% of the people that are being tested in Hazelton are testing positive. Over 120, uh, came out of, uh, a plant in Humboldt. Uh, there's some of the stats, uh, and, and while we're on that, I, I, I'd like to thank the mayor of Hazelton, uh, Mayor Cassatt, who I think under circumstances that nobody really has a right answer here for. But we got to all try to get it through, he's doing a tremendous job. But we all got to get through this together. We can't put the blame game out there. Who's the blame? We, we got to get, uh, everybody involved and get through this. But, uh, with the Hazelton area, I'd be very cautious.
Thank you, I think you're right, Mr. Snead, we got to work together to come up with the best plan. Uh, anyone else on council who has not had an opportunity to speak?
Yeah, this is Steve.
Go ahead.
Um, what's disappointing is, is that, you know, um, when we're, maybe we need to get our legislative body that, that represents Luzerne County and, and more engaged with some of the members in public, because I know there's been many people that have come to me that still have not received any type of UC benefits after six or seven weeks. I think that's a huge issue, you know, economic impact to those families. And it's a travesty that the state itself can't get its, its act together, uh, to get their systems straightened out. I mean, I have a coworker, for instance, you know, that's been six weeks now that she's been off work and has yet to receive a payment from, from the Commonwealth. And, and, you know, I know there's two different systems, I think we need to educate the public a little bit more. I don't know if Manager Pedri has an in with, with, you know, the governor's office, but, you know, that, that's a huge ordeal, because, you know, the $1,200 stimulus check is only going to last so long for those that were eligible to receive it. And, um, you know, I, I think that, that's one area that we can all come to an agreement that needs some help and some assistance. So, you know, maybe we can convey that message or, or add some force behind it to try to get them to, to really dive into their system and, and, and get those payments out to the people that need it the most. You know, what's also very disappointing is that the health department hasn't, um, really haven't, hasn't had any metrics regarding recovery numbers. You know, i- it's all about positive cases, but, you know, most of us have been sitting in the house or working from home and, and doing things for almost two months. You know, so you have 57,000 reported cases throughout the Commonwealth, but how many of those people have recovered already? You know, i- it is very sad that there were people that died from this particular virus, uh, as do people die every day, um, from various other viruses. You know, every virus that, that ever comes into life starts as an unknown. It starts as, uh, something where there's no vaccine for it until the medical industry and healthcare, um, providers identify it. It's, you know, no more different than a computer virus coming into your system. If you don't know what it is and what it can do, you can't remediate it. So, you know, um, it does get politicized, but when you go and look at the data and the actual facts that, that are based on the state's website, um, almost 70% of the people that perished came from the nursing home environment. So if you pull those out, you know, that, that percentage of, of impact is, is less than half of 1%. You know, so you've locked down an entire state of 12.8 million people for less than half of 1% of, of fatalities. You know, and it's like very unfortunate that people have perished. And, and, you know, I know a couple of people that, that, that have left this world because of it. But, um, I also know people that tested positive and then made full recoveries. So, you know, it, it's something that we do have to apply pressure, I think, you know, with the state government to give us the truth, give us some straight answers, stop the double speak that's out there. Um, because we don't have the answers of public officials for our counties. Um, and, and people are getting agitated. You know, people that have businesses have to make rent payments, um, which are much larger than the average homeowner. And those people can't survive without, without maintaining their, their, their business and getting people back to work. So it does have to be a, a measured approach. Um, but the, you know, people are coming to me every day and asking me, what can I do? And I, I really, you know, I have to throw the ball back at the, at the state legislative, uh, uh, branches of government, the state senators and the state reps. And I think they have to do more to, to communicate with us as well. You know, and I don't know, maybe with the legislative committee, maybe we could set something up to try to get the, the legislative, um, you know, representatives on board and, and have some dialogue with them and ask them what the heck's going on down in Harrisburg.
Okay.
I just wanted to respond to that book, about the, that's going.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I did reach out to, um, Aaron Koffer, to Tara Two Hill, uh, to Linda Baker, um, John Udijak, Eddie DePachinski, and they all would be in support of us again if we did this in a positive way.
Okay, anyone else on council who has not had an opportunity to speak?
Uh, Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead.
I think, I think one of the, one of the issues is not so much, and I, I have to think about what LeAnn said earlier about the ability for the governor to just move the goalpost again from June 4th to maybe July 4th or July 3rd, or whatever date he decides he feels is he feels is necessary. And it just puts people at another position where they're without income. A lot of these things and a lot of the reasons why people are all upset is not so much that they're not, they're not thinking about the ability to be safe by CDC guidelines and all the other things. It's the unfairness of it all is, is what's got people more upset than anything, I believe. I mean, the fact that you can go into Walmart and buy just about anything you want, and a guy who has a small business that employs maybe three people, he can't be open. That's the unfairness that people see and the unjustification that gets people's dander up, that gets them upset to the point where they're, they're willing to just say, hey, I don't care if I get this virus. I want to be open, where if it was a level playing field, it might take that temperature down a bit in, in some regard. I think we have two weeks, as Linda says, to go until Ju- June the 4th. I don't think that we will make a big impact between now and June 4th. I would certainly like to try and see what we can do for the people to get some kind of plan in place that we could, you know, give it to the governor. But quite honestly, I think the governor and the Department of Health in Harrisburg already have their minds made up as what they're going to do. And, and I think if we give them a plan, they're just basically going to do the same thing they did to Wyoming County. And unfortunately, I think we should back that, uh, plan up with, with a, a letter to them saying how unfair it is to the people of this county, who stepped up and done what they're supposed to do to try and flatten the curve and do the best we can to keep people safe, yet you still allow Walmart and people to congregate in Walmart and Home Depot and Lowe's and, and all these other places where people, you know, I went to TC Riley's the other night for, for a meal and to take out, and there were people 15 deep standing inside waiting for their takeout order. And it's like, there's no social distancing going on here, but it was takeout, so it was okay. So, you know, there's a lot of things that are going on in the county that have people upset. And I don't think they're upset so much with the fact that they're, you know, they're, they're opposed to the fact that they want to make sure that their neighbors and everybody are safe and that we, you know, we wear masks and all those other things. I think they're more upset with the fact that it's unfair with the policies and procedures that are coming out of Harrisburg, and they're arbitrary. You know, one day they say you don't have to wear a mask, and two weeks later they say, yeah, you have to wear a mask. One day they say you can't go to the liquor store, and three days later they say it's okay to go to the liquor store. You can't sell cars, you know, you can't sell, you know, it's, it's, some of their guidelines is just ludicrous on its face. And they don't want to address it in Harrisburg. They don't want to take the people's concerns into account. And I think that's the concern most of the people. March Trailways is now taking people back and forth to New York, which is something that we don't want in this county. But we can't stop them. I mean, they're a private entity. The governor says, well, we don't, we don't think it's a good idea, but they're still going to do it anyway. So those are the type of things that get people upset. And I think we need to look at those, those type of issues and see if we can get the governor to address some of those issues and say, maybe, as LeAnn said, the plan might be to say, well, certain places should be open that aren't, and petition to DCED to get those places to be able to at least open. But, and to Stephen's point is, you know, I know people that haven't gotten an unemployment check in eight weeks. The state doesn't have their house in order in the unemployment system, and he's not putting anybody on after 5 o'clock that you can't even get through on a phone call. You can't get through by email, they won't answer emails, or 35 days out if you send them an email to get an answer. That's insane. Somebody who's hanging by a thread trying to wait for income, and they're sending an email to the state and they say you won't get an answer for 35 days? That guy could be out of business and his family could be devastated in 35 days. So, you know, there's a lot of things that are going on with the state that needs to be addressed at their level. And, and the county, you know, I think we're not going to do much. If the state says we're not going to do it and they're going to cut our funding, we're pretty much held hostage by the state. And I think that's very, very unfortunate. But I, I certainly think if we submit a plan that says, you know, we feel that the people could do this, it might carry some weight, maybe the manager can get the, somebody in Harrisburg to listen. But I certainly think we need to back it up with a letter that says, you're keeping our people from working that should be able to work. I think that's what's important as well. So, uh, keep, keep all those things in mind. I, I don't have a problem as a legislative committee to work with LeAnn and her committee to try and get something done. I think it's important, and I think the people need it.
LeAnn?
Anyone else on council who has not spoken?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra.
Go ahead.
Um, I just want to like weigh in, because I see both sides of it. So I see where Sheila's coming from, and, and I agree. Um, I'm really close with my, my grandparents, and I would like to come in contact with my own parents without a mask. And the virus is scary to me, and reopening too soon and seeing numbers go up um, because of something that we did and pushed a reopening is, is a really scary thought. But in the same boat, the governor, I feel like he's picking and choosing what can be open and, and what can't be open, like at his own discretion. I can't even find the guidelines that he's following, because I can go to Target where there's a ton of people, and, and that's totally okay, but, you know, uh, if I want to get, if something breaks and I want to go to get it fixed at my little jewelry store that's down the street from me, like, they're suffering and they can't be open, but I might be the only person in there all day. And I'm just using that as an example, and I'm sure there's plenty more. But that's where I think we do kind of need to step in a little and like stand up for these people, because the governor can't answer the question, why am I letting this, this essential business open? But this small business who might have the exact same product as that large business, they can't be open. So, so I, I just wanted to put my two cents in, because I really do see both sides of it. And I agree that the virus is scary, and, um, you know, we don't want to do anything detrimental, um, because I think the health and safety of the people in Luzerne County should come first. But in the same boat, like, there are small businesses suffering that could be open and might actually practice better social distancing and follow the guidelines better than a business that's been open this whole time.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken?
Kim, it's Chris.
Go ahead.
Real quickly, um, af- after sitting back and listening to everybody, there were some great points made by just about every person that spoke. Walter had some good ones, and, uh, Steve was outstanding. Uh, LeAnn, I, I'll throw my support to you and anything you can possibly do to, to, uh, move, move this in the right direction. Uh, although I, I, I don't think it's going to help, um, but at least this, this is at least something that we can possibly do. Uh, the, the governor, obviously, has our hands tied and he controls it. But a- as, as, as you said, maybe we can make things a little bit better for us. Maybe we can get a week instead of making it to June 4th, maybe the end, the end of, uh, of May, maybe. But at least it's something that we can do. And then again, getting on our legislators, that, that's, that's ultimately important. I think Steve had a good point with that.
Thank you. Anyone else who has not spoken? Mr. Haas, I think you asked to speak again?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, um, yeah, great discussion, but I will say the legislature tried to actually approach the governor, put a bill through to talk about steps of recovery, he vetoed the bill. And I, I know, and we all want to work together, I totally get that. But again, it comes down to how much local authority do we have? And what we keep on coming up against, I think Walter said it best, you know, we're, we're held hostage. Walter, welcome, Walter, welcome to county council, where we're held hostage by the state all the time. And, you know, we are an appendage of the state government, but we can't do our jobs unless we're equipped to do so. Again, the plan is very arbitrary, it seems like picking winners and losers, it's not fair. Again, going back, I, I, and Linda, I appreciate what you said about Hazelton, because I, I thought about that quite a bit too. You know, Mayor Cusack down there in Hazelton is sitting in, in Forests of Curfew down there. But other jurisdictions and other parts of the county don't need that. So I think we need to be very cognizant of that, that we represent all the people in the very big diversity that we have here in Luzerne County, and try to move us forward. Again, the, the, even the, the, I, I read a great article by Dr. Madison, The Times Leader, last week. The goals, the goalposts keep on moving in this. You know, originally it was to flatten the curve, and now it seems like we need to eradicate this disease, which we're not going to do it, we don't have the means to do it, we may never have the means to do that. So the, really what we're looking at here is how can we do good for our people that are going to keep our livelihoods going? Because if, if that, if that goes down the tubes, we are looking at, at a recovery that we might not have seen since the 1930s. We, we really might see a, a, a depression coming here if we don't look about how we come back on board here. And I, I really think a lot of people see this, and they see that, that a lot of this seems very arbitrary. So, um, again, what we're talking about here tonight is how we can really move forward. I, I think, I'm willing to help out as well, LeAnn, whatever we need here to, I think, get a, a real cadre of people together, to look at all different backgrounds, local jurisdictions, business owners, working people who are working for a, an hourly wage. We're all suffering here, and it's just not going to get better the longer this prolongs. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh, I just wanted to add one more thing, or a couple more.
Go ahead.
Um, regarding like, you know, the governor vetoing the bill, I mean, and, and that's, to my point is, is to go back and, and go after our state reps and the senators, you know, those that may have voted a certain way. I mean, maybe to try to convince them to change their vote, so the governor is overridden with his veto. You know, so, you know, we can apply some pressure to the state, state reps and the state senators. You know, and, and, and quite honestly, uh, uh, you know, for instance, even like hair, hair care or hair barber shops, uh, hair salons, nail salons, things like that are part of hygiene in general, which to me is like a travesty. You know, getting a haircut is actually keeping personal hygiene in check. Um, I know you, you Um, I know you ladies out there to do your nails, I mean, there's more chemicals that kill everything, uh, in, in a nail salon, you know? And so those are the things that, that really don't make sense to, to a lot of the public, um, because they have to do with personal hygiene, you know? Getting a simple haircut, I mean, everybody's going to come out of this looking, yeah, um, pretty bad at the tail end if it goes on for another month or two. So, you know, and people need to apply some pressure to the state representatives and the state senators, and to make sure that the governor can't veto the bill, because there would be enough votes in the House and, and the Senate to override him.
Uh, Mr. Urban, you must have been looking at my haircut when you made some of those comments.
Well, Tim, mine is starting to go over the ears, too, so.
Well, uh, just would like to wrap it up. I think that we must, uh, wherever we can, uh, work together on this, and, uh, LeAnn has taken the initiative to begin to work on a plan. I think it's very important that we do that, that we show that the, the state, the governor's office, the Department of Health, whoever else would be involved, that we're interested in doing the right things, we want to put a plan together that helps our people located in this county, and also abides by everything the state is looking for. And I would hope that, you know, we'll all work together to do that. Uh, Ms. McDormand, I think, is going to take the lead on that, and we appreciate that. And I'm sure she'll be reaching out to many of our council people to, uh, get information, ask for assistance, whatever it may be. But LeAnn, we would hope that, uh, at this point, you'll take the lead and move forward, and whatever assistance you need, please reach out, and I'm sure that you'll get a good response.
Mr. McGinley.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask LeAnn if, if she would make sure she includes something about what happens if we do reopen slowly, but if there's a spike in the cases, what happens then? If you have, if you can add on to that plan, what happens in that situation?
Yeah, and I think, uh, Ms. McDormand mentioned that, when, if there was a spike or a surge, whatever, however you want to call it, you have to have part of your plan that deals with that. So I think that's important. That's a good point. Okay. Uh, we're going back up to number one, and, um, Manager Pedri, in light of the time, uh, a very brief report, and obviously, uh, council people, uh, any questions you have, please, uh, raise those questions. But you have that report in front of you, it's rather lengthy, but, you know, it's a important report that we get every month, and, Mr. Pedri, you want to comment on that?
No, I mean, obviously, you guys know what's in there. Um, I'll be happy to take any questions and provide answers if I have them, if not, I'll track them down for you.
Any questions in regards to the, uh, division reports for the month of March, the month of April?
I just have something real quick, Mr. McGinley.
Go ahead.
Um, if I could just ask that the, the manager give us a, a, a better detailed report next month, maybe, on what expenses were expended due to the COVID-19, uh, issues in the different departments? That would be helpful. I know some of them have, uh, some of them have some verbiage in there that says how much they've had so far, but, uh, if you could, you know, like, give us some more information for next month, for the next report.
Okay.
Okay? That'd be fine.
Okay. Manager Pedri, did you hear that, please? All right, we're at the point where the public, uh, comments, uh, I don't know if you've been reading your question and answer there, but there's a couple of things that were added, uh, after our other meetings. Under anonymous, facts about the mail-in ballots are on your 2020 primary page. If you're sending your mail-in ballot, you, I think it's, you may not vote in person. That was a question that was raised, I think there are discussions, but that comment's there. Also, under anonymous, provisional ballot is only allowed if the mail-in ballot is not returned. So those are two comments that are on our question and answer. Other members of the public, you're, the, you're now, it's now open for public comment.
Mr. McGinley.
Mr. McGinley, I'm here.
Okay, so somebody got on first before you, Mr. Manta, you'll be second. Who was the first person, please?
Mr. Raybo.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo, you've got three minutes.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to answer, uh, Mr. Griffith's, uh, question about the Hazleton Public Transit with regards to, it's a different, it's a city department, however, it is budgeted separately from the city budget, and it is audited separately. So I hope that, you know, kind of clears things up for him in that respect. Also, I would like to speak about, um, something that hasn't been said as far as this crisis management goes. First of all, I'd like to thank wholeheartedly, uh, Linda Howe's comments, uh, from, on behalf of my mother and myself. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with what she said, and also Mr. Schnee's, what he said as far as when it comes to Hazleton. Uh, we are one county. I have gone to this county council meeting since the inception of home rule, and, uh, I always saw the county as, uh, as one. I never saw it as Hazleton, you know, me going to Hazel, you know, going to county meetings on behalf of only Hazleton. So I think we all got to work together as one, I wholeheartedly agree on that. Now, um, as far as what Manager Pedri said, as far as reaching out to the public, as far as, uh, during this crisis management, I have offered, since the virus outbreak, my hand, as, and, and my expertise as far as, uh, helping in any way I can, especially when it comes to, I, I didn't understand as far as the management teams, uh, that were, the committees that were, uh, you know, organized. Um, one was, uh, you know, housing and infrastructure wasn't a part of that. And, uh, especially in Hazleton, where a lot of multiple families, especially during the outbreak, when a lot of, uh, families coming from New York and New Jersey are shacking up in, uh, converted properties, uh, that have been converted over the years, which is, uh, turning, uh, those houses and, uh, you know, apartments into hives, uh, that could actually spread, uh, the virus. Uh, because there's no way of, um, you know, there's no way to social distance when you have that many people in a living space. So I think Manager Pedri needs to look into that. I think he knows somebody very well, uh, who works, um, in the, uh, Hazleton zoning that can take care of that issue. Also, I would like to, uh, understand, uh, why isn't nobody being clear, is to differentiate as far as the testing goes, who's actually living in the county as far as, you know, uh, testing positive, and who's, uh, living in New York and New Jersey, uh, that are being tested? And also, there's a lot of people who are living, who are, uh, living with those families right now that live in the city, and also in, 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 uh, other parts of the state who aren't testing, uh, and by the way, they're not testing because they're afraid that they're going to be, you know, uh, told to go back to New York and New Jersey. I was told this personally. So I think that needs to be looked into. Also, I agree with, uh, Mr. uh,
Mr. Raybo, would you wrap up, please?
Okay, I'm, I'm wrapping it up right now, Mr. McGinley.
Yep, because we have, uh, some other people who want to comment.
I, I would, I would like to also end by saying the congregating, um, or is done by mostly New York, New Jersey residents in Haz, in, that are staying in Hazleton, but residents like my mother who's immune compromised, who is taking a gamble on her life, uh, you know, because, uh, as, uh, Councilwoman Sideman said, because she's also in that group, um, you know, is, is, it's, it's very stressful, uh, for them.
Okay, thank you.
So I think, yeah, I think it needs to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Manta, you've been waiting.
There, I've been waiting. Okay. All right. This is going back to the, to the election, uh, situation. All right? I couldn't get my comment in before. All right, so this is a scenario that I'm going to put into everybody's mind. So you're going to go into this election thing, you're, and yep, you're going to say, oh, okay, I'll leave my cellphone outside, and, um, I'll, I'll, uh, just use it when I go outside. Or they're going to carry a cellphone in, and they're going to say, oh, okay, uh, the guy that, that's, uh, they're counting for are going to say, all right, now, his numbers are low, so he's going to call friends up to say, hey, send your people down to vote for these. Now, that, that's a scen, that's a scenario. And then also, there's a, a, a phone number that they put out, and that phone number I called for one hour, and it was busy. And then I called again, and it was, it said, uh, from the Election Bureau. I hope that guy from the Election Bureau is still on, so he could hear this. All right? And also, the, did we get any answer from the letter that they wrote to President Trump about the rain tax?
No, sir.
And the last thing was, you didn't get nothing.
No, no reply.
No reply, and then that's bull crap. But anyways, what LeAnn is saying is, put a plan in place now, all right? So if the governor does move the, the, the goal lines again, we have a plan in place that we could put on his desk, if they look, sir, you've moved the, you've moved the goalposts so many times, and the people are sick and fed up. I'm seven years old. I still didn't receive a stimulus check yet, and I know, uh, uh, Ms. Sanders is, is concerned about her health, but please, cookie lady, the, 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 the health problems, if you stay in the house and, 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 and stay quarantined, we have to let these businesses open. You, you're, you're going to show a, a, a shortfall for your tax money if you don't leave these businesses open and, and get a plan in place, because the governor's, if the, if, if the, if the governor gets vetoed, then it's hooray for us. We've done our jobs, and the curve that they put in the first place is definitely showing that it's been flattened. And, and, and stop fooling the public, and, and, and people that are dying of natural causes, they're saying, oh, it's COVID virus. Because of the fact, they want their hospitals and their nursing rooms to get money from the government. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other member of the public out there?
Ryan Shiner.
Mr. Shiner, you're, you're next. Mr. Shiner first, and Mr. Matt, Mr. Shiner.
Okay. There, there's been much, many questions and answers over this year's primary election. Something that hasn't been stated is in reference to the mail-in applications. Many people have mailed in applications to the Bureau of Elections. Last week, the county did a mass mailing of applications to the registered voters in the county. What needs to be said, and I hope the press will follow up on this, the, if you have sent in a mail-in application for a ballot, and you received another application, do not send it in. The Election Bureau is being inundated with these second applications, which they must process as though they never received it, because they don't know, they've already got your application and put you on for a mail-in ballot, until they process each and every additional application that you've sent in. So if you send in an application, just be patient. The Election Bureau is working very, very hard to get this all done, responding to tens of thousands of requests. So if you've mailed in your application, just be patient and wait for the ballot to come out. That way you won't be bogging down the Election Bureau. The process of these mail-in ballots is very labor-intensive, very time-consuming to do. So just please, be patient, and again, I hope the media will put this out there to help, uh, ease the situation over in the Bureau of Elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nat, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Sedman, um, I, please don't misunderstand me. I was the one who mentioned about the state's, um, uniformity and settling cases with people and with regards to life expectancy with seventy-three. It is Medicare and the state who resolve cases, and that's their statement as to the life expectancy for payout and responsibility for the insurance companies who have to pick up the responsibility for a person injured on the job. It's just something that is facts. I experienced it myself. So I, I'm, I'm not trying to minimize anybody's life at all. Do, do not take me wrong, I feel bad for anybody who's lost a life from underlying conditions in the elderly homes. Um, it's just a fact. That's what they place the life expectancy for the average human being. Okay, and, uh, another point I wanted to make, uh, to Mr. Pedri, uh, Manager Pedri, and, uh, LeAnn, LeAnn, um, placing this, a report in with the health organization or with Governor Wolf, um, I think it'd be important to also, uh, bring to the attention to him and the health organization, the escalation of overdoses and suicides that are happening as opposed to last year. And, and, you know, a lot of people, they were, as, as it was stated during the meeting, you know, it was a vibrant society just two months ago, and then all of a sudden the carpet tripped out from under them. And that, that can lead to people, you know, taking drastic measures. And that's proof that what we're experiencing here could result in more deaths from people losing it and faith in the system. And that leads me to the last, um, thing I wanted to say, and that is, a representative I would hope would vote to veto what Governor Wolf is holding up, because the fact that, uh, a lot of people are waiting for the benefits to come through, and that's because of the antiquated computer systems that were supposed to be upgraded in two thousand and seven. And because money that was placed in their hands to upgrade their computer systems in between the two hundred million dollars never took place, and that's left the system antiquated to handle all the claims that are being put in. So in the, in the, in the short and long run, our state representatives, they better go to bat for their people, or that, that inflation has to be made available to their constituents, because they really let them down.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the public? Anyone else in the public?
Yeah, hi, hi, it's Jason Carr, you know, just, actually, I'd just like to say, to possibly end the meeting, uh, if the epicenter of the Revolutionary War was in Wolksboro, Pennsylvania, Luzerne County, there would be no America. No one's willing to fight. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
All right. Anyone else in the public? Okay, council, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Schnee. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mrs. Schnee.
Uh, I should have did this before. I, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Attorney Schwager on his, uh, position overseeing twenty-six thousand attorneys at Romilda Crokamo. That, uh, if anybody ever met him, he's a first-class person, and, uh, send, uh, that, uh, we're just very, very proud of, uh, that he comes from the Luzerne County family. We're very proud of him.
That's a very nice comment, and well deserved. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Walter, move.
Move, vote. Your second vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, stay safe. We will meet the twenty-sixth of May, six oh one, which is the day after Memorial Day. Thank you.
Everybody, stay safe.
Thanks, you too, Bob.
Good night, stay safe.